convene from closed session and there is nothing to report. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:14 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March the 27th, 2024. It is 6:14 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast at Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, March 29th at 1:00 PM and again on Monday, April 1st, also at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at the three W's elkgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. The city council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to our Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hager prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, we will move on to the roll call. And starting with the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right, thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would the Vice Mayor please read our land acknowledgement?
Yes, Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County who endure because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our pledge of allegiance. I might like to invite Councilmember Suen to lead us this evening.
Everyone hand over heart. Ready, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for a moment of silence. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda. We'll take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. Certain, and that one item is Item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring April as Autism Acceptance Month.
Excellent. At this time, I would like to call up Amanda Scott and Dustin Noble, representatives of EG Speaks. Are you here this evening? There we are. And presenting this will be Councilmember Spees.
Okay, thanks for being here this evening. Proclamation in recognition of National Autism Acceptance Month, April 2024. The Autism Acceptance Month, previously named Autism Awareness Month, in April aims to celebrate and promote acceptance of the neurological disability that more than 5.4 million adults and one in every 44 children in the United States have been diagnosed. And whereas autism is a developmental disability that results in neurological changes that create differences in the way an individual reacts with others, thinks, feels, and experiences the environment around them. Autism Acceptance Month celebrates disability autistic culture and promotes acceptance of autistic individuals in our community. And whereas in 2016, the city of Elk Grove acknowledged Autism Awareness Month, and this proclamation will shift the city's acknowledgement of this important designation to Autism Acceptance Month, to foster acceptance and ignite change that sparks empathy and inclusivity for our community. And whereas the population of autistic children, excuse me, autistic children and adults increasing, we take these 30 days of April to celebrate, reflect, and educate ourselves and the community about how best to uplift and support autistic individuals. So therefore, be it resolved, the city of Elk Grove, excuse me, the city council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2024 as National Autistic Acceptance Month.
Excellent, thank you. Please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Dustin Noble, and I am the Chief Executive Officer at EG Speaks. We're a nonprofit serving the city of Elk Grove and the Elk Grove Unified School District's students' families with disabilities. I want to thank the city for the proposed proclamation to acknowledge the month of April as Autism Acceptance Month. As a father of a child with autism and someone who also identifies as neurodivergent, it means a lot in our community to be seen. With one in 40 children being diagnosed with autism and a rise in adult diagnoses, now is the time more than ever to affirm and bring awareness and inclusion to our growing city. I always tell my son that autism is nothing to be ashamed of, something to be celebrated and understood by all, that he is amazing and just the way he is. I tell him autism is your superpower. If that's true, let's make Elk Grove not, excuse me, let's make Elk Grove not only a wonderful city, but let's also make it the not-so-tough secret base for everyone with that same superpower. With that, I would want to say a thank you to the city and the city council for acknowledging Autism Acceptance Month in April. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, we'll join you right down there.
Congratulations. Hey, let's get all nice and cozy. I know. Right here. All right, one more.
Our amazing leaders in the community that are doing really great work for our families. This is very personal to me, as you could see. I just wanted to share with you all that this is something that I have to personally do because it's really challenging to go out into the community and have my kids with me and constantly have to try to explain all their little nuances. And by creating this proclamation, I think it really pushes our community to really be the place that we are striving to be, that city welcoming to all. And I just really want to say on behalf of myself, my family, I'm sure other families as well, that this is a very powerful acknowledgement of our community and our children, our families, our loved ones. And I just thank you because this gets me one day closer to not having to do this, to just being able to be out and not have to, you know, create little things that help other people be comfortable with my babes. So thank you so much, and I appreciate Dustin and Maria and all of what EG Speaks does for the community and the various partners with the Diversity and Inclusion Commission. So thank you again, and I appreciate your guys' time and effort to make this a reality for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your powerful words. Thank you. All right, next up is public comment. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, I want to talk to you about two issues that I find important for our community. One is water. In 2014, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was passed. This means that we need to look at how we take care of our water. Elk Grove is represented on the Sacramento County Groundwater Authority Board, and I've been going to those meetings quite regularly since my friend dragged me into it in about 2015, 16. Last night was a meeting of the Executive Committee, and I brought up that many in our community are unaware of what a GSP is, or even where they get their water and what's going to happen. I appreciate that you have put in your last fall newsletter something about the Harvest Water Project, and that is an absolutely very important project when we're looking at groundwater. I've been saying for years that water is very important. Supervisor Hume even said it was going to be the new gold many years ago. So what I'd like is for our city to consider having our representative on that board give a presentation to you, Mayor, and the council members to kind of educate and formulate a little bit more about the process because there will be money involved. And all of us, all of us within the city of Elk Grove are stakeholders, especially when you consider that your money will be used to help support some of these projects coming forth. The second issue I wanted to bring up was our zoo. Now, I've been talking to people in the community, and there are several that aren't so excited about this, but they won't come to city council meetings. And so I will be the one complainer that is hesitant about the zoo around financial issues of the zoo. So I appreciate the city putting the financing plan on the website so that we could look at that, and I have begun to read that. And I came up with an idea for those of us that are a little resistant to the plan. When the soccer stadium and soccer fields were going to come to Elk Grove, the city coordinated a bus tour out to the site, which now is presently Capota Tractor. I would suggest that maybe we consider, or you as a city, look at using some of your economic development funds to get a bus tour out there. So those of us that aren't completely convinced that that's the right location, or that we should have a zoo out there, take a bus tour, and you can sell us better on it, and that the finances will really happen. So as I'm reading more about the Zoological Society, I see that they have to do a lot of fundraising to really meet their end of the need. And so I thought a part of this bus tour, what you could do is with some more of our economic development monies, you could hand out animal crackers to those taking the bus tour. And maybe we can even start to have these at Old Town Plaza, really convincing everybody that we want our tax dollars to go to this. Not that when I walked across Laguna Springs on the crosswalk and saw the potholes there and how cracked it is and unpainted, but a zoo would be great.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And that is our final speaker for public comment. So I will close the public comment opportunity and move on to our next agenda item, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Bearman, City Manager. I have the privilege to be able to present a few items to you this evening. First of all, we have our State of the City address coming up on Friday. Looking forward to that. So it's March 29th. It will be broadcast on the city's website at 12:30, so please join us online for that live stream event. Looking forward to hearing all the wonderful things happening in our community and looking for the future. So looking forward to listening to our mayor's address. We have another Coffee with a Cop coming up on April 3rd at McDonald's on Elk Grove Boulevard, 8710, between 8:30 and 11:30 a.m. These are great opportunities to come and connect with our police officers here in Elk Grove. We have a call for artist submissions. The Elk Grove Arts Commission is currently seeking proposals for a public art sculpture in front of our new library. The project will infuse more public art into our historic district and provide a warm welcome to all visitors. Artists are invited to submit their statements of qualifications by 4 o'clock on Thursday, April 18th. We're preparing for another Family Fun Day. The Youth Commission will host Family Fun Day on Saturday, April 13th, from noon to 4 o'clock at Old Town Plaza. Free event will feature carnival games, music, and other activities. Food will also be available for purchase. And finally, the city is now accepting vendor applications for the Salute to the Red, White, and Blue on July 4th and the Multicultural Festival in September. If you know any fun and unique vendors that specialize in food and drinks, holiday-themed items, cultural crafts, or kids' activities, please refer them to the section of the city's website for more information. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? I have one question, Mr. Bearman, on the arts, for the arts commission. Can you please make sure that they do really a broad outreach effort to communities of color and everyone and other nonprofits, just to make sure that we are inclusive?
Absolutely. We'll counsel why not.
Very good. Thank you. All right, next item is our consent calendar. At this time, I will open up the public comment, and I have one person signed up for Item 7.4, Ms. Lynn Wheat.
So I had a little time, and I haven't looked at the monthly monies being spent, our tax dollars. And so I just kind of wanted to take you through it. I don't know if you've had a chance to do it or not, but on page two of it, we spent $326 on a zoo lunch meeting that included sodas for $32.63 and dessert cookies for $40.62. We also provided for our employees a flu clinic here at $2,900. So I thank you for keeping our staff healthy and offering something like that because I guess our health benefits aren't enough that they can get their general physicals and go in and be evaluated by their physicians or have the time to do that. We continue to help support our animal shelter, and on page seven, we spent $4,500 on animal food and trap and release. I noticed throughout the document, we are really doing a lot for our animal shelter and providing the necessary services for our animals. We also use Shred City, so I'm glad that we don't keep a lot of extraneous paper around our offices. And we spent $517.74 there. And then, of course, we had a leader seminar for $1,700, and again, supporting Cafe Elk Grove at District 56. I'm really glad that that's happening. That's important, too. But I think the highlight for me is when we talk about win-win and we talk about the settlement with Oak Grove and the amount of monies that that took, I think the win-win was the attorneys on both sides. So Best Best and Crager, on one invoice, was $19,000, a little bit more than that, and another was $6,000, and another was $6,000. But let's not forget some of our attorneys, too. So on page 56, now, I don't know if this was related to Oak Grove or not, but Chronic Moshvis got $6,429.38. And of course, let's not forget about Visit Elk Grove, Visit/Explore Elk Grove. They got $2,105.38. And we could go on. There's more for the zoo. They got $1,000 this month. And then thankfully, we are considering crack seal, so we spent $1,400 on a crack seal project. I'd really like to see those roads improved beyond crack seal and see more of those potholes played, but I believe the zoo is much more important. And we did donate and give some money to our nonprofits in the area, and I'm thankful for that. Sacramento Splash Education got $24,000, and our Weave Advocate Services got $10,000. And again, there's more. Oh, I think the best one was the parking at the courthouse. Somebody submitted an invoice for 64 cents. That seems like a little waste, and I'd be happy to pay that 64 cents to them. And the highest for the courthouse, of course, was $8.75 that I could see. And if you want lunch with a council member, it's $51.30.
Thank you.
So this is our tax dollars at work. Thank you.
All right, there's nobody else signed up to speak on consent, so I will close the public comment period and look for an approval of the consent calendar.
If there's no objections, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next item.
I'll take us into Section 8, our public hearing, starting with Item 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider the 2024-25 Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant funding recommendations.
I think the power. What am I in the wrong meeting? These are meeting materials, but these are the wrong ones.
Was it moved over into the presentation folder?
Yes. That's the wrong item. Am I in the wrong place? Sorry.
If you don't mind, let me take the driving here just a little bit and see if I can find where we're at.
I pulled up the wrong one. Sorry about that.
Yep. And just to double check with you, that looks like a 4:22 today, so I think we're good. I put it on the desktop, and then I'm going to stop clicking around, so it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. I can't get to it now.
Just try hitting yes. You can exit out, and then...
Technical difficulties.
There we go.
My apologies for this.
Bingo.
Okay, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Alicia Tutt, Senior Grant Analyst. The item I have for you tonight is our annual discussion on how you would like to allocate the Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant funds for the next fiscal year. As you are aware, the Community Development Block Grant is CDBG, is provided annually through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. Priorities for the city's use of CDBG funds have been set forth in our five-year consolidated plan, which was last renewed and adopted in June of 2020. Use of this funding is limited to certain eligible activity types, and a small amount of which is eligible to be used for public service activities. To be eligible for funding, most activities must benefit low-income persons. We also have Community Service Grant, which supports nonprofits that serve the Elk Grove community. Historically, council has set aside money from the general fund for this program. This is a more flexible funding source and can be used for a wide variety of costs, with the exception of sponsorship for events, which has their own grant program, and council will consider funding for those recommendations next month. This year's discussion also includes funding recommendation utilizing some Measure E funding. The needs and priorities identified by the Elk Grove community to guide Measure E spending allocations included addressing homelessness, which has long been identified as a priority for the city's CDBG and CSG programs. Therefore, in evaluating the applications and providing funding recommendations for the coming year, Measure E funding was also considered for activities addressing homelessness. For the next program year, our estimated CDBG allocation will be $910,987. We are estimating this amount based on level funding from our current 2324 program year, since the final allocations from HUD have not yet been released. Up to 20% of that funding may be used for Administration and Fair Housing activities, although the city plans to set aside only 15%. Federal regulation also has a cap available for the amount for public services at 15% of the funds that are allocated to us, and historically, the city has used the full amount for that purpose. In addition to the new funding allocation, we are including the reallocation of close to $198,000 in prior-year unspent funds in our recommendations tonight. By federal regulations, these reallocated funds are limited in use and may only be reallocated for capital projects. One additional limitation of CDBG funding is that it cannot be used to supplant recent local government funding, so we must be careful that any activities that have previously been funded through local funds cannot be funded through CDBG. For CSG, we have $457,969 available, which reflects an increase of just over $17,000 from the previous year's allocations, which is in line with the projected general fund revenue growth. And finally, we have included $65,000 of Measure E funding and recommendations for activities that address or prevent homelessness. The city released, going the wrong way. The city released a joint application in January for the CDBG and CSG programs, and funding availability was announced through the city's website, weekly updates, and social media postings. Several notices were also sent via email to our extensive nonprofit interest list. A technical assistance webinar was held in January, with an archived video being posted on the city's website for those who could not attend on the scheduled date. Using one application, nonprofits could apply for CDBG and/or CSG funds for each activity. There was no limit to the number of applications that could be submitted per organization. Applications were then due in February. The city received a total of 36 applications from both nonprofits and city departments for a variety of activities. The total funding requests exceeded $3 million, which is always a tough challenge for us as when we're allocating the limited funding that we have available. After determining if an applicant was eligible for funding, the applications were reviewed based on the impact they would have on the Elk Grove community and target populations as identified in the consolidated plan, feasibility of implementation within the time period established, budget reasonableness, and if the organization had the administration and financial capacity to implement the program, and if the project had matching funds, either in-kind or cash. During the review process, applicants were given the opportunity to clarify aspects of their proposals. In your packet, you have a detailed list of funding requests received and a short description of each proposed activity. The next few slides represent those applications that are being recommended for funding. The two capital project applications received and recommended for funding are from city departments. One is the Minor Home Repair Program, which is operated out of the Housing and Public Services Division and offers forgivable loans to low-income homeowners needing assistance to make minor health and safety repairs to their homes. The other is the Annual Citywide Curb Ramp Program, which works to reconstruct non-conforming ADA ramps throughout the city. Next are the CDBG public service recommendations. An asterisk next to funding totals in this slide denotes that some funding in those amounts comes from either CSG or Measure E. These recommendations are all for returning grantees that have been funded one or more years in the past. The two projects recommended for Measure E funding are the Elk Grove Food Bank Services Support Works and Utility Assistance Program and Waking the Village Emergency Housing for Transitioned Aged Youth. Next, we have our Community Service Grant recommendations. Under the CSG program, the maximum eligible amount to be awarded to any single organization in any given year is $100,000, and of the 16 nonprofits recommended for funding, two are new grantees to the city. We are recommending funding for a variety of organizations, offering public service assistance to the homeless, low-income families, victims of domestic violence, youth and senior programs, animal services, as well as support for theater and arts programs. And after tonight's public hearing, staff will release the CDBG Draft 2425 Action Plan for Public Comment from April 8th through May 8th, and then return to council on May 8th to formally adopt those recommendations. Once the final allocation is released from HUD, those funding recommendations will be revised as necessary. The CSG and Measure E allocations will be adopted as part of the annual city budget process, and then staff will work with individual grantees to write a scope of work and budget for incorporation into formal grant agreements, and funding will be available for them July 1st, 2024. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. We have a number of people signed up. We're going to start with, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is it Kedrian? Am I saying it right?
Kedrian.
Kedrian Veltcher Harris. Following Kedrian will be Diane Lam.
Once the final allocation is released from HUD, those funding recommendations will be revised as necessary. The CSG and Measure E allocations will be adopted as part of the annual city budget process, and then staff will work with individual grantees to write a scope of work and budget for incorporation into formal grant agreements, and funding will be available for them July 1st, 2024. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. We have a number of people signed up. We're gonna start with, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is it Kedrian? Am I saying it right?
Kedrian.
Kedrian Belcher-Harris. Following Kedrian will be Diane Lampe.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kedrian Belcher-Harris, and I serve as the CEO of Classy Inc., a nonprofit organization dedicated to offering educational resources and philanthropic opportunities to youth of Northern California for over 16 years. As a proud resident and deeply, and a parent deeply ingrained in the Elk Grove community for the past quarter century, I come to you today with a heartfelt plea. The recent challenges brought forth by the pandemic have unveiled profound vulnerabilities in our educational systems, particularly with the Elk Grove School District. Classy Inc. has tirelessly stepped up to bridge these gaps, offering invaluable support to our local youth as they navigate the uncertain terrain of post-secondary education and career pathways. With five children of my own who have traversed the halls of Elk Grove School, I understand intimately the critical role that community partnerships play in shaping futures of our young residents. Our programs have been a beacon of hope for countless students, providing them with the resources, mentorship, and guidance they need to thrive in an ever-changing world. Your esteemed council members have always demonstrated a commendable commitment to the welfare of our community's youth. Your continued support and advocacy have not also gone unnoticed, and for that, we are profoundly grateful. However, this is our first time officially submitting something to Elk Grove. We have been actively offering resources to Elk Grove residents and youth for the past five years, based on the California state funding that we've received. Today, I humbly beseech you to consider our proposal for grant funding, which will enable us to expand and enhance our services for Elk Grove youth, and even further. By investing in Classy Inc. and this Equitable Affairs Initiative, you are not merely funding a program, you are investing in the future of Elk Grove. Your support will empower us to continue our vital work, ensuring that every young person in our community has the opportunity to reach their full potential. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to our community's well-being. I eagerly await the opportunity to discuss our proposal with you further and explore how we can collaborate to uplift the next generation of Elk Grove leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Diane Lampe. Then we have Maurice Wheatley Jr.
Good evening, and hello to all. I'm Diane Lampe, Vice President of Elk Grove Heart, Homeless Assistance Resource Team, and to make this go quickly, I am gonna read also. So as I stand before you again this year, words cannot express how pleased our Elk Grove Heart Board is to be teaming with the city for the efforts of the Measure E funding and new ways to support those experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove. Working together with Elk Grove's homeless navigators and the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary to meet a variety of the needs of the homeless has been a wonderful experience this year. We're thankful for the opportunity to have this CSG grant to continue to provide some monthly hours of administrative assistant time through a partnership with Elk Grove's Community Services District. Among the admin assistance duties for Elk Grove Heart is supporting our board's needs and answering calls and emails that come our way. He vets the clients' needs to see if they qualify for Elk Grove support, and if so, gives them the information to contact our city's homeless navigators to determine which services they may qualify for. I've taken, I take those calls on Friday nights and on the weekends when he's not available, and they're consistent, constant, need to be vetted, and need to get to the homeless navigators right away as well. This personal contact and warm handoff helps those who contact us to get the needed services as soon as possible. So the grant helps us have that admin assistant time, and we greatly value that, and thank you for your support of that. Our funding amount has decreased some this year. It's gonna be all right. We can make that work. We're grateful and hopeful that it will be approved. I also want to say that we heavily partner with, including but not limited to, United Methodist Church, Uplift, XHope, Chicks in Crisis, Elk Grove Food Bank Services, and we support the approval of their grants as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maurice Wheatley Jr., followed by Christine Cuddy.
Good evening, esteemed members of the City Council, distinguished guests, and my fellow community members. My name is Maurice Wheatley, the Executive Director, representing Classy Inc., an organization committed to supporting our youth, fostering our leadership, academic excellence, and community engagement. We've succeeded in contributing over the past two years, the enrollment of our youth getting into four-year universities, 15-plus years of community engagement, and youth-led programming. Today, I am here to introduce an initiative that is close to our hearts, the Equitable Affairs Initiative, designed to transform the educational landscape for low-income youth in Elk Grove School District, a project submitted for the fiscal year 2425 CSG proposed allocations. Despite progress, a stark reality persists. According to Department of Education, 10.3% of our students are minorities, facing lower graduation rates and reduced access for advanced programs. This significant disparity is a call to action for us all, all right? The Equitable Affairs Initiative tackles these disparities by fostering strategic partnerships and support to enhance educational access, aiming to increase advanced program enrollment by 3.33%, boost extracurricular participation by 30%, as well as grade performance, and build beneficial partnerships across the Elk Grove School District and the stakeholders. This initiative unfolds in phases, right? So initial planning and engagement, three to four months, beginning on July 1st, program development, four to six months, as the school year begins, followed by continuous implementation, evaluation, scaling over 18 to 24 months to ensure lasting impact, which the project would conclude June 30th, 2025. Now, key stakeholders in the Equitable Affairs Initiative include the project sponsor, the CEO, Kedrian Belcher herself, who was just here, myself as the project manager, Classy Inc. board members for strategy and staff from the schools like Joseph Kerr, which I was an attendee at or graduated at, Harriet G. Eddie Middle School, Monterey Trails, and Elk Grove High Schools, playing key roles for implementation. Now, students and parents provide, um, critical feedback. Local businesses, community organizations, and funding entities also will offer support. We are committed to transparency and accountability, and success for us means seeing improved academic performance, participation rates among our target group, receiving positive feedback as well. And so, thank you for your time and consideration. We are eager to collaborate with all the stakeholders to make the Equitable Affairs Initiative a beacon of educational equity and opportunity in our district.
Thank you. Wow, perfect timing. That was amazing. Next up is Christine Cuddy, followed by Wendy Cross.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christine Cuddy. I'm the Executive Director of the Senior Center of Elk Grove. I'm gonna try and be really quick. We have grown exponentially. It's unbelievable how many people we have now. Over the past year, we were seeing 150 to 200 people a day. We are now seeing 300 to 350 people a day. We continue to offer our membership at just $50 a year, $2 for classes, and we really want to ensure that almost all seniors are able to afford that, and we also have scholarship programs for seniors that cannot. We have been blessed by the help we have always received from the city of Elk Grove, and I wanted to say thank you so much for your continued support, and I hope that, uh, we continue to grow. It's just been so much fun to see the seniors. They are just amazing people. So, thank you for all of your help. Have a good night.
Thank you. Wendy Cross, followed by Omar Turner.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us all the opportunity. As the Executive Director and co-founder of XHope, I want to say thank you to our city council and to our mayor. These grants are a dream come true to all of us. We're in this city to affect this city with positive change and come alongside families that are vulnerable, and so we're honored to get to do this alongside you. We began our local impact in 2011. My husband and I adopted from Sacramento County a little boy with special needs, who came to us as an emergency placement, and at the time, we had zero support. We realized there was a lot of other kinship placements happening as well that had zero support, so we started out of our garage and our trunks of our car to come alongside families, saying yes. What we learned after that was there are a lot of vulnerable youth in our area that also needed support, and so we expanded our efforts. And two years ago, we placed our roots here in Elk Grove and rented a facility right off of East Stockton, and since then, our programs and our impact have increased 300%. So I know that the resources that we're able to provide to the families and the immediate relief are in need, but in addition to that, we've now had the opportunity to build relationships with these families. And in that relationship building, we're able to provide outreach opportunities that bring the entire family together. The families we service are not just foster/adopt. We have been able now to include majority of the vulnerable kids in our area, homeless, unsheltered, at risk. Last year, we served 682 youth at least once, but most of them multiple times through our Caring for Kids kits, first-day-of-school shopping opportunity, foster laptops for all of the foster kids that graduated, formal wear, scholarships, extracurricular activities, and we gathered our families for a summer bash and a holiday bash. So we want to thank those of you who were able to make our fundraiser last year, our Evening of Hope specifically. Kevin Spees, Mayor Bobby, thank you for being there on our ribbon cutting, and then Darren Soon, you've been a huge, huge support to us. We know that we're seen and supported by you, and we're so grateful for that. So, believe it or not, we've already outgrown our facility, and so within the next year, we are looking to move into a facility three times the size so that we can fill that gap of not just providing resources, but continue building relationship throughout the year and not just at our outreach events. So, the new facility will allow us that opportunity to connect with the families. Again, thank you for making it possible for us to empower and equip the vulnerable youth in Elk Grove. We are here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Omar Turner, followed by Yehiel Rogers. I'm sorry.
His name is Yahiel.
Yahiel, thank you.
You're welcome. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the city of Elk Grove. Thank you, council members, and I really want to say thank you for this grant. It allowed us to work with some students inside Elk Grove and with sports. But crossover is much more than just a sports activity or a sports league. We're into developing kids' character and helping with their social, emotional learning. We do this through the sport of basketball, and what crossover is really about, we teach the kids this, crossover is about youth, youth making changes, changes in attitude, behavior, and commitment. And it happens this way by doing it Deb's way, that just happened to be my wife's name, Deborah, and we do it by helping develop dedication, education, belief, and service. And we've seen, uh, these students come into our league and participate, and the best way that I could give an example of what has happened to some of these youth that have participated in our league is that it has allowed us to build relationship even with the administration of the school district. And one of them called me down because they had a problem with one of the students that walked out of class, and because like some of us who played sports, we really look up to our coach. And so when they called me down there, and I was able to talk to the young lady, who happened to be a part of our league, by the time we finished, she was almost in tears, apologizing to the administration for her actions, and then went on to apologize to the teacher. And so, I just know that we're making an impact in the lives of kids, and I just want to say thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to do that. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Yahiel Rogers.
How are you guys doing? Good. Yeah, first and foremost, I'd like to give a honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and I just, you know, so honored that you guys just allowed us to come here and just thank you guys for the, you know, the grant. And I'm coming as just a full-circle testimony of Coach Omar's league. I'm 23 years old, about to turn 25, and I was in his league. I was that kid who, you know, used to run around and trying to be around, you know, the other kids, who was dunking and wanted to do everything they want to do, I mean, do everything they did and everything. And I seen how Coach Omar and his staff were just continuously relentlessly pursuing after children, pursuing after the youth who were out there, you know, making wrong decisions. And, you know, during my high school years, I started making wrong decisions. And, you know, I just really just see how there's a lot of different kids who was in crossover, who came back and started working with crossover, right? So they seen something that crossover had, they seen something that captivated them, and understood that it made a lasting impression on their life. And so, right now, I'm one of the AAU coaches for crossover for our organization with our middle school boys and our middle school girls, and it's really a joy. It's really a joy seeing youth making changes, right? Through attitude, belief, and commitment. And so, I just once again say thank you guys for giving us this opportunity, and we know that kids' lives will be changed forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Man. Yeah. Yeah, so you guys caught me on a good day, so I got my haircut today. Thank you.
You can converse over there. Get the haircut. Next up is Royal Edwards, followed by Scott McIntosh. Okay, Scott, are you here? Okay, Scott McIntosh, and then Daniel Iratani.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am the executive, my name is Scott McIntosh, and I'm the Executive Director of Teen Center USA in Elk Grove, and I come here tonight to speak not only as an employee of the Teen Center, but as a, as a person who benefited from the Teen Center when he was a young buck going through high school and junior high. You know, we work really hard to provide a safe place for our teens to be able to hang out and recreate, and, you know, someone might come in and say, oh, they play video games, and they have snacks, and they do all this stuff. All of the, everything that we have, all of our equipment, all of our programs, they're all vehicles to connecting our teens with our staff members and volunteers to build mentoring relationships that can point them in the right direction. And so, we are thankful to all of you and the city of Elk Grove for funding us and for all that you do to support us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Daniel Iratani, followed by Avantika Rao.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Iratani. I am the Development Director at the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center. Thank you all, first, for the opportunity to apply for this funding and the recommendation as well. This funding is gonna provide emergency housing to victims of domestic violence and human trafficking. A lot of times, these individuals come to us with nothing. Kids in tow, they got a suitcase behind them if they're lucky, and they got nowhere else to go. And this is gonna provide your residents and our clients the opportunity to get back on their feet. We're gonna provide them shelter, give them a roof over the head, while our staff can provide them a wide variety of different services to give them the foundation to get back on their feet. So thank you. Also, just want to say thank you for making this funding a priority. As a fundraiser, I more often than not see funding be cut, so to see a city council, a staff, and the residents of the city of Elk Grove make this funding a priority for nonprofits like the Family Justice Center and all these other folks out here who are doing fantastic work, is really a wonderful sight to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel, and give my best of faith. Thank you. Avantika Rao, followed by Alma Wilcox.
Hi, I'm Avantika Rao with Project Sentinel. I'm a fair housing staff attorney, and I'd like to express deep gratitude as a long-term resident of the Sacramento County area for the CDBG funds. And Project Sentinel is responsible for investigating and advancing fair housing. And Project Sentinel is responsible for investigating and advancing fair housing in the Northern California jurisdictions. So I just wanted to give you an overview of some of the benefits of the funding. For example, I was able to participate with code enforcement of the City of Elk Grove in participating in a rental housing seminar last year. Recently, I was able to do outreach to correctional staff who were working with the Rio Casumnes Correctional Facility in Elk Grove to provide fair housing training to them. Also, just as a case summary, it actually relates to Autism Acceptance Month. We were able to prevent a family with an autistic adult from being evicted by providing counseling to the property management about the behavioral supports that they needed that were disrupted during the pandemic. So thank you very much, and I'm very grateful. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Alma Wilcox, followed by Jennifer Marcello.
Hi, good evening. I'm Alma Wilcox. I'm the Program Manager with CalFresh at Farmers Markets for Alchemist CDC. And on behalf of Alchemist CDC's CalFresh at Farmers Market Program at Laguna Gateway Plaza Farmers Market, thank you for funding this program year after year. In 2023, we facilitated the distribution of more than $126,000 in combined CalFresh benefits and market match incentives at this farmers market alone. This means that every dollar you invested into this program last year facilitated $10 in purchasing power for fresh, locally grown fruits and vegetables. And we're confident that your renewed funding for 2024 will maintain this level of impact. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Marcello, followed by Darcy with the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to have me here tonight. I'm Jennifer Marcello. I'm the Director of Programs for Meals on Wheels by ACC. I really thank you, city staff, for your recommendation for funding that will allow us to serve around 21,000 meals to the Elk Grove seniors. We chose to focus on, I'm sorry. We chose to focus on the seniors that are mostly in need this year. So it is completely for our home delivered meal program, not to our congregant meal program. I think the part that really drives home, you know, the pandemic really shone a light on the need in our community and the subsequent inflation as well. Because many of our seniors are fixed income and, you know, with everything going up, they have to stretch their dollars. And the service, you know, while we're not means tested, you know, we don't, just because you're low income doesn't mean you qualify for the program. It does help these seniors stay in their own homes and their communities and, you know, keep them off the streets, keep them from becoming homeless. So we're very grateful for your support this coming year and all previous years. And we'd also like to extend an open invitation to Mayor and Council to come and visit our facility, go on a route and meet some of your Elk Grove seniors and hear firsthand what this program means to them, how it really helps them. So thank you again for your support. And I would really love to have you come on a ride along and meet some of your folks because they're really wonderful people. So if you would like to do that, I know we should have my contact through email so she knows how to get hold of you.
Thank you. Thank you. Where can we get your information? We've got it. Okay, I'm going to take you up on that ride along. Thank you. Next up is Darcy with the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center, followed by Tammy Silveira.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Thank you so much. I'm Erin Martin-Lee. This is all of our Board of Directors. We came here tonight to thank you. As many of you know, we have moved. We are located back in historic Old Town Elk Grove in our wonderful new central space. We are excited to reconnect with our roots at the heart of Elk Grove. As you know, we're a 501(c)(3) charitable arts organization, and all of our income goes directly back into our operational costs and arts programming. We have one part-time employer, employee, Darcy Robertson, who is our gallery manager and curator. And all of the rest of our event planning and implementation is done by volunteers. We rely on funding. Aside from much-needed grants we receive, we also put in the work to raise additional funds through sponsorships, individual contributions, giving events, Big Day of Giving Tuesday, all done by our volunteer Board of Directors. Grants from the City of Elk Grove for community service and special events and our annual Big Day of Giving are our largest income producers, accounting for approximately 25% of our income. We also give the community an opportunity to get involved through memberships, which we offer benefits for charitable contributions such as special events and workshop discounts. We are committed to bringing high-quality art to our community through monthly art receptions on the first Saturday of every month. You're welcome to join us. And featuring outstanding regional artists, themed art competitions, and special events like our open fine art competitions, Art Tour, Small Treasures, with over 60 different artists. And our recent Festival of the Arts in Old Town Plaza, this will be our third annual this year, April 27, which draws about 1,500-plus people. We are committed to ongoing fine art education, open to all ages in Elk Grove, through our art workshops taught by experienced working artists. And we encourage emerging artists to show their work throughout, through the Community Arts Display Program and our four-year gallery, which is rented on a monthly basis, to community artists. And it allows them to show their work and have gallery experience of being in an art reception. The Elk Grove Fine Arts Center also partners with local high school artists, district art educators, and many other nonprofits in Sacramento County. The contributions from the City of Elk Grove are important, and we want to thank you so much for your continued support. The City of Elk Grove is ensuring a long-lasting legacy of the visual arts right here in our community. Thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Let's see. We have Tammy Silveira, and the last speaker is Carol Kahn.
Thank you very much. My name is Tammy Silveira. I am the Elk Grove Unified School District Homeless Education Liaison and a resident of the City of Elk Grove. I'm here to support the application for the Community Services Grant for Organization X Hope. But I want to add that there are so many valuable organizations here tonight. It's just been wonderful to hear what everybody has shared and encourage the city to continue the support of so many of these organizations that we partner with to support our students in the school district. The Elk Grove Unified School District Student and Family Empowerment Program has been collaborating with X Hope for over three years to support students and families experiencing homelessness in our community. And that number continues to grow every year. We certainly also saw the impact of COVID and the pandemic on the number of students experiencing homelessness. X Hope provides us numerous resources, school supplies, brand-new clothes and shoes for kids who don't have them, baby care items for our moms. They have invited us out to tour their facility. When our families go to their facility, they don't feel like they're going to get something that's handed down. They're treated with the utmost respect when they're there and given every resource that's available. They provide household items, gas cards, and other really vital things for our families. And this is where we turn when our resources are limited. Most recently, we refer to student, a senior at Valley High School, who's experiencing homelessness and didn't have the opportunity to go to prom. And my daughter just went to prom, and I know how important that is. She got to go to the Say Yes to the Dress event, where she was able to pick out a beautiful dress. Those things seem so simple, but they are landmark opportunities for students in high school to be able to celebrate their achievement as they get to graduation. And organizations like X Hope and so many of these groups provide for our kids. So I just want to say that this student was overwhelmed at the support. She walked away feeling like she was ready and beautiful to go to prom this year. These are just, you know, a few examples of the many things that X Hope has helped us out with. They are also an active partner in the events that we host. They show up and bring all their goodies and information for our families so that they can make connections. So we invite them to join us, and we can count on their participation. So we fully support X Hope and so many of these organizations and their work in this community. And I just want to say thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Carol Kahn.
Good evening, Mayor and esteemed City Council members. I'm Carol Kahn. I'm the Executive Director of Project Sentinel. This has truly been a moving and very inspiring meeting today. I have to say that to be among the many groups that are serving the community in Elk Grove is quite a privilege. Just a little bit more about Project Sentinel. We are a nonprofit organization with nearly a half century of expertise dedicated to fostering access to and preserving of housing through fair housing practices and civil rights protection. We also run dispute resolution programs to quell conflict between residents and housing providers that could lead to eviction and homelessness and homeownership mortgage counseling as well, including for first-time homebuyers. It's a broad range of housing-related education curricula as well. It's also provided across all our service areas. We have a mighty team of 14 conducting and driving our work at Project Sentinel and Fair Housing with a mission to cultivate fairness and equality in housing. We've had the privilege to serve the community in Elk Grove since 2015, and we're very thankful and grateful for the continued support and funding. And we're also partners with other entities in the Sacramento County to provide these services, which has been a very meaningful and valuable experience and impactful for the citizens that we serve. So we're hopeful, again, to continue that partnership for another year. We thank you tremendously for the support to do so, to protect the housing rights of individuals and families in Elk Grove. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And that was our final speaker. So I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments and direction.
Madam Mayor, first, I need to recuse myself on two items that you'll discuss, and I'm going to walk out and.
For the record, can you state them?
Certainly. It would be Running for Rett and the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation.
Thank you.
And just for the record, that's because either you or your spouse is on the board of one of the other organizations.
Correct. That is the reason. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll start to my left here. Comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Oh, first, I guess I'll start with a comment. You know, I'm happy that we could provide some resource to all the great work that all of you.
Councilmember Soon, can I just clarify for a minute? So with, we certainly take your comments. Yeah, what I would suggest that we do, as we've done in the past, is take the two items for which Councilmember Spees has an interest and stepped out of the room. And those two items are the Elk Grove Community Foundation and Running for Rett. Staff had made a recommendation on both of those. Councilmember Spees stepped out while the rest of the council deliberates and makes a tentative determination on that, and then he'll come back, and then maybe we can deal with the rest of the items.
Thank you for that. Yeah, sorry. Just. I'm definitely happy to support staff's recommendation for those two.
Any questions, comments? Are you good? So we have a motion. Can I get a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we can bring back Councilmember Spees.
You can hear right there. Welcome back. Sorry to keep you out there longer than you had to.
All right, well, we'll still start with you.
Okay, thanks. Again, as I was saying, I just want to thank everyone in the audience and those maybe watching at home who are part of these organizations for all the work that you do for our community. There's a lot of need out there. I wish there was more, there was more funding, resources that we could provide at this time. But, you know, we're limited and some tough choices need to be made here. So please continue your work, please continue trying, and we'll do everything we can to get the support, get you some support so that you can keep serving our community. Having said that, I have some questions for staff because I always look at, and I know it's a consideration, Ms. Tutt, about the number of Elk Grove residents to be served. And I'm just curious, like, how do we prove that out? I mean, is there, is it the applicant's estimation? Or do we have our own due diligence that we, you know, try to reconcile their numbers? And then, because I also look at some common themes here. I mean, I look at, I look at X Hope, Chicks in Crisis, Al-Mizba, all doing non-perishable food, diapers, jelling loose clothes, those types of things. And I realize, you know, there's, people have different ways, they might serve different communities. But they're proposing, they serve 10,000 residents, and, you know, X Hope is 670, and Chicks in Crisis is 2,000. So that's just one example, but I'm just wondering what are, how you go about vetting these estimates?
So the, the numbers in the spreadsheet are provided by the applicants on their application. They have two different questions that they're asked. One is how many low-income residents are served versus non-low-income versus not non-residents? And then we also ask different, we ask the same question in a different way. So they provide basically the same answer in two different places and their estimates of who they're serving. We do clarify when some of them, when we send back questions for all applications, we do clarify when we can, when some of the numbers don't really seem like that they add up for the program. We have had in the past where some of them more estimate on the number of eligible participants in the city versus who they're actually serving. So some of those are clarified in the follow-up questions, and we update those numbers in the spreadsheet. And unfortunately, not everybody was able to respond to the questions to be able to adjust those. So the numbers in the spreadsheet are what was provided by the applicant.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. In looking at, looking at the applicants, and I know a similar question of what Councilmember Soon had asked, is like how some of the numbers have come up and they feel a little different. But based on the questions and how they're asked, they come back with their numbers. But it feels like for each program, every applicant has quantified how many people are affected. And just looking at the amounts they've asked for, how do we come up with the determination of the amount of grant funds that we will award to an applicant based off of the type of work that they do or the type of work they're seeking to do? Is it perspective or is it based on the work that's been done in the past? Because I'm trying to figure out, as we're trying to award certain amounts, and we, some folks are given the full amount that they've asked for, some get slightly less. I'm just trying to figure out how we quantify the dollar amount and how do we come about the decision-making and determining how much we give to an applicant?
So the applications are looked at on a variety of factors. We look at the impact on the community, the high-need populations, the feasibility of implementation, if they've been funded before, their history and what they've provided. So there is some historical nature in terms of the amount that is funding. We look at budget reasonableness, what they're asking for, because they provide a breakdown in the budget of what all of the different line items are for. Some of those items that they request are ineligible for funding, like food or things like that. So those sometimes get removed from the amounts when we make a funding recommendation. We also look at the administrative capacity. And again, if they're a prior organization that we have knowledge of or if they provided documentation in their application that shows their administrative capacity to be able to do that. So it's, there isn't one specific formula, and it's not a specific amount by the number of served. It's kind of all of those factors together in addition to just the limited funding that we have available and being able to just kind of fill in gaps where we're able to provide that money.
That's helpful. Thank you, Ms. Tutt, because I've always, because even like last year when we were giving our awards for grants, some applicants received it for the first time. So, and some of them have been applying. have been applying and have been receiving it for some years. So I think it's a fair process. And for those who applied that did not receive an award, definitely keep their eye open because for some programs, maybe the first year you've applied for the city, and so it's just trying to make sure that as you apply again next year, there's a year under your belt, they're showing, and there's progress or some success that can be pointed to that can help them be a recipient next year. So thank you, Ms. Tutt. This was very helpful.
Councilmember Spees?
I do have a follow-on question, so I guess it would follow off of Councilmember Brewer. So it's an imperfect process, right? It's—and it's difficult. This is actually one of the—one of the items that I look forward to, and by the end of the evening, I hate the item, because we have to—we have to say no to some degree, right? So my question is, at some point in time, do you communicate back with them and explain to those who got less than they asked for or got nothing, right? Specifically, what that reasoning was and opportunities for improvement for next year?
We definitely have the—I have grantees who contact me and want to meet with me, and we are welcome and open to meet with anyone that wants to talk about that and to go through it. I don't think in the past we've done any formal communications with each individual one, but that's something we can certainly look at. But we do meet with applicants and talk with them about their proposal and some of the concerns that came up or recommendations that came up through the review process and help them. We also meet with grantees during the application process, so anyone who contacts us and wants to meet with us to talk about their proposal as they're writing with it. We've met with them and held meetings and talked about how they can strengthen their application and kind of help guide them into what would fit—which program their application best fits under.
And in fact, I think—it was it this year or last year, or I guess both—that we—there was a workshop, an opportunity for them?
We do a technical assistance workshop every year, and we've hosted it online for the last few years, and we have it posted on the website, so anyone that's still there can go watch it throughout the program, and then after that, we have more one-on-one meetings as people request them.
Right. Okay. I mean, this—I think you could probably find—you could probably—people could agree with every item that has been approved to some level, and I think people could advocate for folks who didn't get some. The unfortunate challenge is that we have a limited pot of money, and we have to make decisions that are less than perfect. So, thank you, Ms. Tutt. I appreciate it, because I'm sure this is not an easy—you know, because you get the opportunity to meet folks and talk to them and understand where their heart is and why they're doing it, right? And a lot of these are our heart projects for folks, right? And—but they need some—they need some cash to make it happen, right? And it's probably very difficult to, you know, say, "Ooh, good idea, but," right? So thank you for doing that work, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Robles?
I just want to say thank you to everybody who applied for the grants. What this shows is that there's a need, and what it shows is that you guys are fulfilling that need that we don't see, and ultimately, it's for people. You know, when you take away titles and everything else, we have to focus on how we're helping out our community, and our community can mean different—to different cultures, to different folks, to different ages, right? So we have somebody who's investing in our children. We have someone who's investing in our seniors. We have folks who are investing in our unhoused childrens and teens, and this is all very important, and if anything, I'm more excited and happy that we're coming together as a community. And you're right, it is the hard part, where you're making the decision at the end, where it's like who gets funding and who doesn't get funding, right? But Council—Vice Mayor Brewer said something also, where for those who applied for the first time, and if you didn't get selected, don't let that discourage you. That just means it's the first time here, now we know who you are, but continue engaging with us, continue being here present. I actually want to tour a lot of these facilities, so please reach out, because I want to see what you guys do on a day-to-day basis, because then we can bring stories and we can let people know what's going on and share that excitement to see that. And I think that's one of the most important things, when you start putting the stories behind what's happening day-to-day, when you're changing people's lives. And yet, it's—you know, you can look at 13,000, or you can look at 14, or however month the amount of money that's given, you're changing lives, right? Crossover basketball does change lives. I've seen it before. So, Coach, what you're doing with your kids, you're instilling them discipline. You're instilling them that it's all good to fall down, but you got to get back up and try shooting the ball again, right? And I love these stories, and I think, you know, the more that we get exposed to these stories, because oftentimes, our schedules are insane, but I know that we love everything we do a part of this job, but we also love seeing the stories. So I want to say thank you to everyone who applied, and as we make tough decisions, that's why we've been elected here, to make some tough decisions, but we want to continue seeing you here. We want to continue seeing you advocating for your program, and also want to continue seeing and advocating for this community. So thank you so much, and these are my comments.
Thank you. Excellent questions and comments from my colleagues. I want to thank all of the nonprofits that have applied. Nonprofits fill a huge void in not only Elk Grove, but in all communities. You are all doing tremendous work in all of your various fields. If you are an applicant that did not receive a grant, please follow up with staff if you have not. How can you strengthen your application for next time? Were you missing anything? Is there additional data that you could use? But please, stay engaged. Like my councilmember colleague said, stay engaged, stay a part of the process. These aren't easy decisions. We would love to fully fund everybody, but unfortunately, we just don't have that capacity. But, you know, and also reach out to us individually. I know that, you know, some of the work that you're all doing may speak very closely to maybe one member over another, and you can get us engaged, and maybe we can help you raise some of those additional funds as well. We love supporting different nonprofits in our community, so please invite us to your events. I look forward to going to all of these events and supporting as well, so please—again, this is a partnership. It's not just about today, but this is a longer journey, so please continue that relationship with the city, and I want to thank everybody for being a part of that process. With that, we're just providing direction, so this is not a formal motion. Are we good with our city staff's recommendation? Just a nod would probably—thumbs up, we're good? All right, does that take care of what we need, City Attorney?
Yes.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you, everyone that came and spoke and applied. Have a good evening. All right, we will move on to our next item, item 8.2.
That's a public hearing that was continued from March 13th to consider a resolution approving amendments to the conditions of approval and subdivision design review for the Sheldon Park Estates tentative subdivision map project and making a finding of consistency with general plan for future amendments of roadway and drainage easements and dedications of public utility and access easements for the Sheldon Park Estates Amendment Project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Kira Killingsworth, project planner for the Sheldon Park Estates Amendment Project. The proposal consists of an amendment to the previously approved conditions of approval of a subdivision design review for Sheldon Park Estates tentative subdivision map in order to convert a portion of the subdivision into a private gated community and install two vehicle gates. Also, find consistency of the general plan for future amendments of roadway and drainage easements and dedication of public utilities and access easements. The project is located on the north side of Sheldon Road in the rural residential community. The project is currently under construction of 45 single-family homes on two-acre lots. The subdivision has four existing roadways: Penta Way, DeSani Way, Avian Court, and Aquafina Court. Twenty-eight of the lots will be part of the private gated community if approved. The original subdivision map was approved in May 2014 for a rezone and tentative subdivision map. 113 acres was rezoned from agriculture residential five minimum to agriculture residential two minimum acres. It's also to subdivide the 113 acres into 45 lots for single-family dwelling units. In 2019, there was a general plan update which adopted a policy that permitted—prohibited gated communities in the rural area. In 2020, the applicant desired to convert the—excuse me—previously approved map into a private gated community and submitted a request to the city. The request was reviewed at the council in 2021, and after two meetings and public input, the council declared it—clared its intent to amend the general plan to remove this policy, RA-1-8, and the policy was later approved with a general plan amendment in May 2021. With that, the applicant has come back, and they must do the following to finalize the private—privatizing the subdivision. So one of the items is they must amend the conditions of approval, and that is adding a few conditions from Engineering Services Division as well, CSD Fire, and those conditions that they added are on Page 5 and 6 of the staff report. They all—we also deleted—recommended deleting three conditions, and that's on Page 7, and those conditions are in relation to anything that's with the public street. In addition, the applicant will need to create a homeowner association. The homeowner association will fund the—the any of the funding for the streets. They also will create a setup of CCNRs, and they will do maintenance of private improvements of the sidewalks, pavements, streetlights, signs, et cetera. In addition, they will need to amend the subdivision division—uh, design. There's no changes to the layout of the map. Really, that's changing to the approved final maps of Unit 1 and 3 is the language of labeling. Instead of saying "public," it'd be "private" with a dedication of easements over private streets for utility, maintenance, and emergency service access. And then after that, they would have to—they would like to install vehicle gates. If converted to vehicle gates would be on Penta Way and DeSani Way. And just to note that this cannot happen, the installation of gates, if the streets are not privatized. And again, the streets that are being privatized are DeSani Way, Aquafina Court, Avian Court, and Penta Way, and the gates are subject to a building permit. Lastly, the staff recommends that the committee—sorry—the council finds consistency with the general plan for future roadway and drainage easement amendments, and this would need to be completed for the process to vacate all existing public right-of-way and dedicate new public utility and access easements over the proposed private streets. Staff recommends that the council find the abandonment and dedications are consistent with the general plan. The subdivision will remain as two-acre lots, and there are two other private subdivisions that are in the rural area. One is an existing, and then another one has been pre—recently approved by the planning With that, staff finds that the project is exempt from SEQA per State SEQA Guideline Sections 15061, which is the common sense exemption, and 15303, which is a new construction and conversion of small structures. If the council decides they do not agree with staff's recommendation, the applicant would not be able to install the vehicle gates or privatize the streets, and they would remain public. City does not affect any city finances to be impacted. Therefore, staff recommends that the council finds that Sheldon Park Estates Amendment Project is exempt from SEQA per 15061 and Section 15303. Approve the amendments of the previously approved conditions of approval and subdivision design review for the Sheldon Park Estates tentative subdivision map, and find that the future roadway abandonment and drainage easement abandonment is subject to consistency with the general plan. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, if you have any questions, as well as staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Guyan Kovani. I'm the Sheldon Park Estates Homeowner Association. This project has been in process for a long time. It's been almost three years. Our homeowners are very excited about getting this project approved. We agree with the staff, so we have no—no problem with it. So we're ready to move forward, and I'm sure my homeowners will be delighted with your favorable word. Thank you for your time. Thank you again. Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this item. I will close the public comment opportunity, and Mr. Kovani, do you wish to add any further comments? Are you good?
No, I'm done.
Okay. I will declare the public hearing is now closed and open it up for any questions or comments from colleagues.
Mayor, I'd be happy to move staff's recommendation.
Second it.
All right, two of a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item, please. 9.1.
Thank you, Mayor. Section 9, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, and that's going to be considered resolution dispensing with formal request for proposals for a contract with Aerodome Inc.'s drone response system program.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, my colleagues, and our resident who's left. Let me grab a mouse here. My name is Nate Lang. I'm your Special Operations Lieutenant. I oversee the SWAT team, K-9 unit, as well as our special equipment operators. I'm here to present on a drone as a first responder program. This is a company called Aerodome, and they provide a drone as a first responder program that will allow us to have drones throughout our city that could automatically deploy to calls for service. A little bit of history on our drone program. In 2019, we developed our program with three officers, Dave Moni, Kenny Vick, and Chad Bluet. That was just a couple of drones and a couple of guys trying to figure out how we could utilize drones in public safety to enhance public safety. Since then, we've utilized them with our SWAT teams. We've utilized them for street racing, sideshows, as you guys would see, our Fourth of July events, or illegal firework activity, I should call them. We've provided Overwatch for our Fourth of July operations, and we have for several years now. So in partnership with our code enforcement, we utilize these drones to identify locations and individuals who are lighting off illegal fireworks, and we follow up with that with a citation from our code enforcement—our code enforcement team. In addition, I want to highlight our sideshow activity. It's an incredibly dangerous activity that happens within the city of Elk Grove and in our region. We're able to safely deploy drones, identify the vehicles without having to actually stop those vehicles amongst all the other crowds. We're able to target those vehicles and stop them away, and issue citations, tow vehicles, identify vehicles, and issue warrants for those vehicles without our officers having to make contact during that time where it's incredibly dangerous for them. Some of the requirements for the drone as a first responder industry, so drones are heavily regulated by the FAA, so what waivers that we have currently, we have a beyond visual line-of-sight waiver, which requires us to have a visual observer view whatever drone is in in the sky that the pilot's flying to ensure safety. The other waivers that we have are nighttime waivers, so we can fly in the evenings, because typically you would not be able to do so. Our waivers allow us to fly in tactical scenarios such as SWAT operations and things of that nature. I want to highlight, we have currently 30 pilots for the city of Elk Grove that have all been trained with the FAA and have licenses. That's an requirement that we require as a city that's not required from the FAA to have Part 107 license. The certificate of—the CO allows us to have any employee for the city of Elk Grove fly drones for public safety. I want to talk about some of the preparation we did. This wasn't just a project we just came up with, an idea. Chief Davis— Chief Davis asked us several years ago to look into a drone as a first responder program and how that could enhance public safety. So in May of 2022, myself and several colleagues of ours developed a committee. We went around the country, looked at different programs. We surveyed different types of platforms to find out what was the best on the market, what was the safest on the market, and the most cost effective for our city. This is a photo here of Chula Vista Police Department down in SoCal, and they are kind of spearheading, they have essentially spearheaded the drone as a first responder programs throughout the nation. Some of the evaluated platforms that we went, that we, that we evaluated, Cape, Motorola, some of the pros and cons to each, there's pros and cons to each platform. Mainly, the biggest con to Cape was the fact that we had to do software downgrades. Every time we would upgrade a software, it wouldn't allow our drones to fly, so we'd have to downgrade our software. It's a significant consideration for us when we're looking at public safety, not only using the drones for public safety, but making sure that they're safe in our skies and not falling out of the sky. So when we had to do software downgrades, it was a company that we weren't going to consider because they were not keeping up with the technological advancements that we require. DroneSense and Flock, you guys are very familiar with Flock, with our real time information center. DroneSense is also a company that does a similar platform. These docks require us to have essentially nine docks throughout the city to get full coverage. Aerodome allows us to have two docks and an additional dock, three docks, so we can have full coverage within our city with three locations as opposed to nine. That's significant because the other companies offer a cheaper platform, but redundancy. So if we have nine locations at $50,000, and we have to double that for redundancy, we're looking at a million dollars within our city for full drone coverage. We identified Aerodome as the best partner for us in this, in this space. They allow us to fly in the evenings. They have advanced radar technology that other companies don't have. They have software that integrates with our Mark 43 CAD system, if you guys are familiar, where the pilots can fly directly from our Mark 43 CAD system as opposed to a third party software. The CEO of this company was also the CEO who developed SpiderTech that you guys are aware of, that we use for our public integration, where people can make comments on calls for service and things like that. It's the same CEO. An important distinction that this company offers, Aerodome, that others don't is the GIS overlay. So as you can see in this map, it's kind of grayed out, but you can see the streets here. Those are overlaid. That's, that's a map that tells us exactly what street it is, as well as what address it is. This is significant because the pilot who's flying this has to multitask, and when they're able to, if we're looking for a fleeing suspect that's jumping through neighborhoods, they're able to identify the precise location of that individual without having to utilize another officer, operator, or analyst. This is a map of how the radar solution works. It uses ADS-B broadcast, it uses remote ID and things of that nature to identify other aircraft in the sky to avoid it. So the automatic avoidance allows our drones to fly without having a collision in the sky, which is our biggest concern. This is a video, a short video of how the battery swap operation works for Aerodome. This docking station allows the batteries to swap out as opposed to a contact charge or physically landing the drone to have somebody else swap the battery. This is significant because our downtime has been greatly reduced. Aerodome can swap out a battery on one of their drones in about four minutes. So with a contact charging such as Flock or DroneSense or Cape, a drone would be down to charge for approximately 45 minutes, which is a significant amount of downtime. So the benefits of having a drone have the battery swapped out allows us to get that drone back up into the sky sooner than 45 minutes. These are the types of call types that we would likely send a drone to: assaults, reckless vehicles, suspicious people, missing persons, suspicious, suspicious circumstances, stolen felony vehicles. I want to make a distinction that we are not utilizing this as any sort of surveillance technique. These are utilized only to respond to calls for service. We are not looking for stolen cars, we are responding to a stolen car. And I think that's an important distinction for our community to understand, that we are not utilizing this tool in any way to surveil anybody. I'm a resident here, that'd be a problem for me as well, and that would be a consideration that we wouldn't, we would not consider a company that was, wanted to do a surveillance full time operation. That's not what we're, that's not what we're intending to do. Theft, robberies, fire life calls, burglaries. We've had numerous conversations with Kusunas Fire. We're partnering, partnering with them. Chief Rodriguez has generously offered every one of his fire stations as a location, if we needed it, for our dock stations. I guess an important thing to highlight is the partnerships we're having with Fire in these operations as well. We've also set up a live stream with them for traffic collisions, hazmats. As you guys recall from the floods of two years ago, or last year, excuse me, we were able to provide live feeds for them to make a determination on getting resources to the houses that were being flooded, levy breaks, things of that nature. Want to put some context into how many calls for service our dispatch center received in 2022. Use 2022 because I had all the data points for 2022. I didn't have them for 2023 at the time. 177,000 calls our dispatch center took. Of those, 45,000 community initiated calls where a police officer was required to respond. Of those, we have determined that 5,153, essentially 11% of the calls could have been handled by a drone. That means 11% of our patrol calls could have been handled by a drone as a first responder Another important point is our estimated response time. So within 10 seconds, our drone could be up in the air. It flies at approximately 50 miles an hour with the radius of our city. We should be able to be at any call within three minutes, which is significantly faster than our patrol calls. Our patrol officers can't physically get to a call at any given time. I touched on the different areas that we could utilize them in this slide, just to show how, this is, this is a real video footage of us checking the levies last year. What's next? Questions from council?
Thank you. That's an excellent report. At this time, I'll open up public comment. No one is signed up. We'll close public comment, and I will start to the right this time for any questions or comments.
Thank you so much for presenting today, and thank you for hitting on the one thing that I think is very important and for our residents to understand that this isn't a surveillance issue. You know, Councilman Spees coming from cyber, but also of military background, we understand if it can make something efficient and we can save lives, especially while thinking of it tactically and making sure that we put our officers' lives, you know, for safety instead of putting it at risk, and this is something that can help then, can help alleviate that. So you got the component where it kind of seems a little bit scary, but also it helps reduces time, it helps that 11% that we can utilize this, and when it comes to flooding and natural disasters, we can put this up in seconds and then also recharge it right off the bat, and that's when you're talking about efficiency. So I truly appreciate you presenting this and bringing this to us. I'm about technology and making sure that we can create an efficient force, but I use that in the context of lightly, because I also have the military background. So just saying that way, I think differently. So, but I'd like to hear what my other colleagues like to have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
So I think the, the first central question is relative to dispensing with a formal request. I think that's highly appropriate. I think that, that would, that would be my motion, but some additional items to point out here. I was, I was happy to see on KCRA this morning that they, they brought up this issue, but I, I take issue with them on one thing. This isn't a weapon in an arsenal. This is not a weapon in an arsenal. It is a tool in a toolbox. I view it more as drone as an early responder, or drone as, excuse me, not drone as an only responder. Okay? This is to reduce the risk to our PD, our Fire, and more, even more importantly, to our citizens. When you think about a high speed chase, I mean, there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of movement in, in years, in recent years to, to actually not do high speed chases, and I'm certainly not suggesting that we don't engage in that. But what I am suggesting is this is an opportunity to deescalate that, to be able to view things going on where you may not need to get to that level, right? I think this is, is a fantastic thing for safety. It also allows, it allows PD to get a closer look while there's less risk to the PD, right? So in the instance that there may be somebody who, you know, someone believes is holding a weapon, well, maybe he's holding a phone. And this provides an opportunity for that drone to get in closer, and if, and if there is something that happens, it's just a drone, it's just a piece of a, it's not somebody's lives, it's not the life of a young citizen, and it's not the life of our first responders. So in terms of encroachment on civil liberties, I, I'm 100% there with you, and as I, and as I thought of it, you know, I, I, I've talked many times with our, I've just forgotten what they, they can hear me in the back, and they're probably, Arctic, thank you. There, there is a, there are, there's a standards department. People may not know that, but there's a standards department which tell PD and train PD on how specifically to use these tools in, in situations like this. And so, and I had the opportunity to talk with the Arctic and say, okay, what if one of these drones are flying over the top of somebody's backyard on the way to something else, and, and there's 10 pot plants showing up? They can see 10 pot plants in a different, you know, in a different yard. And so that's, that's not what we're looking for, right? I believe that there are protections in place with our police standards where that is not a problem. I think it's a great use of our Measure E funds to improve the safety for our PD, our Fire, and our citizens. One of the things that we didn't talk here is that I know that it can be used for Fire, right? Is there smoke, or are there flames? Huge difference. How many, you know, how many people, or how many, how many Fire, how many PD do I roll out to a situation if I can see that eh, maybe it's a, you know, a smaller fire than it allows you to tailor, right? So, and additionally, as, as it was mentioned, it reduced, it helps to reduce call time. It helps us to multiply the ability of our safety, our public safety agents to get out to different locations. So if you can't tell, I'm 100% in support, and so I'd make the motion, but I'm happy to hear more from others.
Excellent. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Spees is 100% correct. This is a tool in the toolbox to help keep us, our community, our, and our public safety safe. But I do have a question in the presentation. I know you mentioned we have 30 officers, all three shifts, that are unmanned aerial system, or air support officers. How many of these devices do we have at our disposal?
Good question, and I should clarify, we have 30 pilots. They're not all sworn officers.
Okay.
They are CSOs, your Arctic analysts, your Arctic employees. We're not limited to just using sworn personnel. That's a distinction you're going to see at Elk Grove PD that you're not going to see in other cities. Everybody I showed you on these videos are cops. We don't operate like that. We've expanded our, our, intentionally expanded our ability to, to provide coverage to our city by allowing people that are not officers to engage in this, in, in the public safety sector in this, in this specific realm. As far as how many drones we have, and so since we don't have 30 officers specifically, I, I would estimate we have about 15 to 20 officers that have these drones in their vehicles. Those, we have about 20 drones right now, they're smaller scale. The drones that operate in a drone as a first responder program are able to fly up to six miles. The drones that we have in our vehicles can fly a mile, mile and a half. So these are very different enterprise model types of drones that allow us to fly further distances, which allow us to have less locations. So I hope that answers your, I hope that answers your question.
It does, and the reason why I mention that is because I know Kusunas Fire has been using drones for several years as well, and we've been using them also, because I've, because I've been seeing them for the, over the last few years. But to see us do a formal agreement, and I see it's a three year contract, it's good because it provides a little bit of consistency and stability in, in working with Aerodome on this. And I think with the data that we get, that we collect from all the instances where we have to put them into service can really show the tangible benefit to the community of why we are doing this. It's like anytime we're using technology in the, in the face of law enforcement, I'm a big fan of, and, and I'm looking forward to seeing other communities following what we're doing in this respect, because this is more than just being used for the Fourth of July. I love the video where he showed it, because as people had approached us over the years saying, what are you guys doing on the Fourth of July? Are you guys really catching these, these folks who are doing these illegal fireworks? Well, yeah, we are, but we're also using them for other purposes, and those purposes are the difference of, of saving lives, and we do it through, through a lot of ways, and as you mentioned, having the Arctic, having this, and it is, is just, these are two important tools in the toolbox where you use technology in our, in our aid to keep our community safe. So I thank you, and I'd like to second the motion when the time is appropriate.
Thank you.
Time is appropriate. Councilmember Soon?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll just tack on to what Vice Mayor and Councilmember Spees were saying. You know, I'm glad you showed the, the drone footage of inspecting levies, because that's where my experience with drones has been. So in addition to the comments my colleagues earlier, I mean, using it for flood emergencies, using it to take a look at our infrastructure, I think, again, it is a, this could be a very useful tool. Thank you, Officer Lang, for presenting the information, everybody. I think, and the Elk Grove PD does a great job in all its outreach, having the drones. I know Sergeant Vick is out there all the time, ready to show people that thing going in the air, the drone going up in the air. I just, I hope more of our residents will take advantage of that to learn more about it. I bring up flow operations because I've had a lot of exposure to that technology in the past, and, and, you know, my, my colleagues who are in the military, I'm sure have as well, and so I think getting our residents more comfortable with, with this tool and the technology, I, I think will, will help, will go a long way. I, I will like to emphasize that Elk Grove PD, through its leadership, its members have always used its tools responsibly, and so I, I do understand the, the concerns. We received some public comments about privacy, and, and I know, you know, there's, there's sometimes are, in some communities, concerns about, you know, military aspects of drones, but I like to emphasize and remind everybody that this police department in this city, under this, this leadership in the past, has always acted responsibly. And so that gives me, you know, great comfort in knowing that this technology will be used for the benefit of the community and minimize any imposition on, on public privacy and abuse of that, of that use of the, of this technology. So with that, pass it back to Mayor.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent comments from my colleagues here. You know, the reason why we're not seeing a lot of complaints, I think it goes back to public trust. Our community loves and respects our police department, and, and that is key to overcoming some of those, you know, misconceptions of the technology. I applaud the use here for innovation, and of course, making this safer for our officers, our public safety, the response time. This, this is what I think, you know, most cities should be doing. This is a great investment, it's a great tool, as my eloquent colleague mentioned, and so just thank you for that, excellent presentation. We have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'm not going to delay that any further. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, nine point two.
That's the presentation of Elk Grove Police Department's 2023 annual report.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, my name is Bobby Davis. I am very fortunate to be the Chief of Police for the City of Elk Grove's Police Department. I am going to present the 2023 Annual Report of our organization, and you will see throughout this organization how proud I am. I think what Lieutenant Lang just did is an example of who we are, what we are, and what we represent. I would just like to add one more thing on that. I think one of the opportunities we have with the drone as a first responder program are an opportunity to not contact citizens. Sometimes the contact is what brings some fear to some of our community. The reality is that the drone can actually eliminate that. We don't have to always go if the drone can show us, there's no need to go. So we save money, we prevent contacts from community, and potentially we save relationships as a result of that. It's a wonderful program and we appreciate everything that you've done to help support that. In addition to that, I want to start by thanking our real-time information center to help put this together and our partners here. We don't do anything that we do with the police department without your support and without our partners at our city. And you'll see why. We have a significant number of people that were in backgrounds, and we don't do any of that without our human resources and getting the people that we have to get in our streets and help protect our community. So the Elk Grove Annual Report at a glance. I know you really wanted me to talk on the normal one, which is probably would have been about an hour and a half, but I shortened it up to just under 45 minutes. So I'll get started here. This is Together, United, in Community and Membership. And that's something that I've always said about being together as a, not just a profession, but as an organization, because the stronger we are internally within the police department, the stronger we are externally in our community. We're better for the people that we work with. So about the City of Elk Grove, it's beautiful, as you can see from that picture. City of Elk Grove is situated just south of Sacramento. It's the second largest city in the county with 42.2 square miles. Elk Grove holds about 178,000 community members. And in 2023, an architectural design report ranked Elk Grove in the top 20 on a list of 115 emerging luxury American cities. And I thought we should be proud of that. Cities that are ranked based on six categories, and that's activities, properties, dining, annual income, diversity, and for us, one of the most important things is safety. We have a very safe community, and I think that it shows, and you'll see that throughout this report and in the end with our, some of our crime statistics. Some of our success really is how we are and how we interact in our community. And as you can see here, not just is it a beautiful place to, for us to interact and work, but it's a beautiful place for our community, for us to engage in different things. And if you see, this is the center, District 56, which is a gorgeous place for all of us to attend, and it's another place that many of us feel safe. Here's our City Council. Again, we thank you for your support. We really appreciate it. The Elk Grove City Council consists of five elected officials, four elected to represent specific districts, and our mayor, who all Elk Groveans vote for. One of the things that we're very proud of is our community advisory board. Since the inception of our chief's community advisory board in 2018, the mission has been to act as a resource for me or the chief of police. And in this formation, in the formation of the strategies, development, policing concepts, and increasing public awareness regarding policy issues. And by that, they have input or say or give us ideas as to things that are happening in our community that are directly affected by some of our policies, some of the procedures, and it's not just for the City of Elk Grove or the state of California, some of the things that happen nationwide. We're really proud of the fact that they bring things to us that are of concern in our community, and we're able to look at our policies and make adjustments that are relevant. This year, our goal is to actually provide this service to the youth of our community as well. We're going to try to develop a youth program that is very similar and get together several times a year so that kids can have a voice as well from the things that they're seeing in our community. And this is also part of an initiative that we had, thanks to Measure E, to develop our youth services program. The Elk Grove Police Department, our mission, to continually improve the quality of life in Elk Grove through strong community outreach and partnerships, fair and impartial interactions, promoting public safety through prevention, intervention, and enforcement, development and promoting a diverse and professional workforce. And I think that this city is about that. Everything that is spoken in this, in our mission is who we are as a city. And I think it's important, and you see it every single day, you see it in this room here, diversity and partnerships are how we find ourselves in a position to be successful. So to do that, transparency is important. Our professional standards monitor significant components of the police department, including our internal affairs, hiring backgrounds, workers, compensation claims, training standards, field training programs, department policies, employee relations, property damage, vehicle accidents, and use of force incidents. In addition, they inform the department of updated best practice measures and to work closely with the city attorney's office on litigation matters to maintain accountability and probably most importantly, transparency within our community. Professional standards is facilitated, and this is where our human resources has come into play for this organization. 183 backgrounds are full-time employees, 395 part-time volunteer or contract employees, 128 hours of advanced officer training, 32 hours of investigative training, 32 hours of active shooter training, and eight hours of high-speed emergency vehicle operations, totaling 200 hours for every employee. But the 183 backgrounds and the people that are coming to backgrounds for us to hire happen with our city partners. As you can see here, just a few pictures of some of the people that we've hired, a couple of them are laterals from other organizations or other cities who have found our city to be the one that they want to come to and work in and live in. Hiring demographics and statistics, 2023. 2023, we had the pleasure of welcoming 64 employees, of which 16 were patrol officers. Elk Grove PD is proud to have promoted 19 sworn staff and five professional staff for a total of 24 internal promotions. Elk Grove Police Department is proud to have total personnel of 257, with 150 being full-time police officers. New hires, and this is, I think, important. It shows the diversity of this organization, diversity of our profession, and the direction that we're going as a city and as a profession. In 2023, we hired 45% male and 55% female. We're very proud of those numbers. 2023 new hires by the numbers, Asian 15%, Hispanic 22%, Black 15%, and White at 47%. Our total personnel, 2023 male, total for the whole organization as it sits today is 54% male and 46% female. That number has changed significantly from the past 20 years, in the past 20 years. Our total personnel, as the agency, the last one was just for the last year, but this is total 13% Asian, 20% Hispanic, 10% Black, and 56% White. So our professional standards also addresses the complaints, and this is where our transparency comes in. Internal affairs complaints remain low for the fourth year. We have six that were received this year. Those are all internal, meaning they were things that our folks saw internally that we observed that we thought were concerning, and we were able to investigate those. But if you look over the last four years, from 2019 to 2023, you see how that number has gone down and kind of remained consistent below that 10 or 15 number. And I think that goes to show where we're at as far as hiring, where we're going as a profession, and the expectations of not just our community, but this organization. Our use of force data is very similar. This is specific to every contact that we have. Every time use of force is done, we keep tabs or track it, and you can see where our numbers are across the board. It's pretty consistent every single year with the use of force. Takedowns have a lot to do with arrests and our K9, our taser use, our chemical agent, kind of everything that we do. And it talks about that, that's in our use of force. And if you look at the numbers, they're very consistent from year to year, last year to this year. Their differences, the biggest one probably is a difference of four uses of force in any category. Spider technology, we talked a little bit about this earlier in Lieutenant Lang's presentation. So our spider is a way for us to track how we're doing in our community based on every call for service. So when we go to a call for service, the spider tech, this technology will actually communicate with the people who called and ask us if we're performing to satisfactory needs. And a quick example is if, you know, how satisfied were you with your experience with the Elk Grove Police Department dispatch? And across the board, we have four out of five, four out of five, four out of five, four out of five, whether it's calls for service into our communication center or actual interactions with the officers who respond to their homes. We're very proud of that because it shows that we do have a great relationship with our community. But on top of that, we put an emphasis on our service to our people. And that emphasis is graded every time we have a contact. So as you can see there, the people do respond. We had up to 2,000, almost 2,000 responses in some cases, and then some are lower. But the reality is that we try to find out the best way that we can perform for our community, and community feedback is exactly how we can do that. This last year also, we had a, one of our awards, we do an awards ceremony every single year, but this year in particular, and I highlighted this one because it's, it related to the officer that we had that was killed in the line of duty, Ty Linehan. And this year, Brian Schaff received his award. And the award criteria was developed by using Ty as kind of a model. He had great integrity, he had faith, love for others, which is a theme of this organization. And he was compassionate, he was devoted, generous, and kind. He was also accountable. He didn't hold himself too seriously, and he made our department a better place to work for all the Elk Groveans and the Elk Grove officers. Ty was really, truly one of a kind. The criteria had to do with being a complete, healthy, good human being, and it really demonstrates the way that he led his life with gratitude. Brian Schaff exemplifies every single thing there. People go to Brian because he's somebody that we're not just proud of, but he's a trusted confidant in this organization and in our community, and he has now been promoted to captain. So he is now one of the leaders at the executive level in this organization, and we are proud of that. Media and community relations, you know, this is our bread and butter when you're talking about reaching out to the community in many different facets, whether it's our barbecues in the beat, which are getting ready to start again, or if it's just our different community events, working with our Black Youth Leadership Project here in town, whatever it might be, our community relations and media are usually in the forefront. We have an excellent social following as a result of the work that they do, and these are just a few examples of what they do. In the past year, our community relations, media unit continued to showcase their proactive approach in strengthening connections with our community. They prioritize building trust and partnerships, organizing events, participating in meetings, having personal conversations with community, and collaborating with faith-based organizations. Nothing better than going to coffee with a cop and spending about 35, 40 minutes talking to people who are curious as to who we are and what we are in this organization and what our city can bring to the table. And it's, we're very proud of who we are, and we continue to do these events because we know that that connection to not just our community, but the youth in our community is what's going to continue to drive this organization and our profession forward. You can see we're on all the social platforms, and we use them to provide good news and to provide concerning news, things that we want to get out there if there is something that's wrong or concerning in our community. You can see the community outreach. We have our toy project, 305 toys were received. We had the Etch A Sketch program where you, if catalytic converters can get sketched, so we had 65 of them. Regional Safety Day, and we had a wonderful attendance at 5,500 people. As you can see here, in the summertime, our media, community relations brought back the highly anticipated barbecue in the beat. This series came back, or came back last year and is on its way back this year. And we're going to hit, we hit Johnson Park, Mewoc Park, Admison Park, Backer Park, and Derekar Moto Park last year. A barbecue in the beat also provided an opportunity for the Elk Grove Police Department to continue to foster a relationship with our community partners. And by that, we worked together with our CSD and had fire and other community partners, some of our city partners came out as well, so that they can come out and show our folks in our community, not just that we partner well, but also provide an opportunity for them to ask questions of those particular organizations. It's really a wonderful program, wonderful project, and this year we're going to expand. We're going to have our animal services at most of those as well. It will have some more of our city partners there as well, so that people can come in our community and see why it is it's such a beautiful place to live. As you can see here, here's our barbecue, and I left it on this page a little bit long on purpose. Ready for the barbecue and the beats to come back. It's a great time for us. We had the Sheriff's Department helicopter come out, we had Reach come out, and the California Highway Patrol as well brought their helicopters out because that's another resource that we use. And those resources are used, and we're able to use them because we have good relationships with the people in our region. This right here is a picture from us as well doing community outreach. This is with the Black Youth Leadership Project, which is right behind City Hall. We had several hundred turkeys that we handed out this Thanksgiving and feeding many of the people from our community. But that's with the partnership of the groups in our community, the advocacy groups. And it was a wonderful program, we're really proud of that and the outcome of that particular day. In addition, you can see this is our, if you have a chance to look at this, you'll see this is where we did all of the gifts giveaways. These are for families who not just needed food, but these, some of these families also needed gifts during the holiday season so they can ensure that they would have a good Christmas. Real-time information, so this kind of gets into some of the technology and the things that are important with us being innovative in what we do, innovative in every approach of how we spend our money, but also how we utilize the resources as a result of spending that money. And this is where our real-time information center really stand, we stand out in this region. Other agencies come to us to utilize our service and real-time information, and we're able to provide that service because we have the technology here, we have the relationships here, and we have a staff here that is phenomenal. Our staff has been not just nationally recognized, but we have the one staff member who was the National Real-Time Information Center Employee of the Year. So across the nation, we received the award for that employee, and that happens to be Andrea Cortez. She is obviously part of this and a significant part of who we are and what we are, but I think it speaks to the overall process that our city, our organization, has put into the technology and the innovation to ensure that our community is safe. That's real-time information, that's the future of law enforcement, and we are a step ahead of the game when it comes to that as a city and as an organization. And they are departments, they are, I'm sorry, they are responsible for more than just real-time information that's going out. It's actually internal information, it's information citywide. We are looked to from our fire partners. We, again, responded to the levees, we do different things, and it's all run through the real-time information center where we're able to push real information and share real information at real time for all of the people who need it in our city, whether it's our electeds, it's our staff, and the officers who respond to those calls. We are very fortunate to have the real-time center. Operations, so our areas in the Elk Grove Police Department underwent a restructuring this year to better serve our community needs. As a result, really of Measure E and the opportunities that we had, we grew. So we were able to take different areas and absorb them in different areas within operations to include our traffic unit. Under our Field Services Bureau, which traffic was not there in the past, what it did was allowed us to expand how we respond to community, how we're able to go out and do different traffic enforcement, and you'll see later where that's important because of the ability for us to have the freedom for officers to conduct vehicle stops, and that has changed a lot, several of our areas significantly. With the addition of the Measure E funding, 2023 was rather another year encapsulated by a tremendous amount of movement from the Field Services Bureau, specialty assignments within the police department. And although it's been a great deal of movement, our patrol units have continued to keep our ranks filled to ensure the community was provided, has been provided with the service that they deserve. And to that point, we've had higher numbers in patrol services than we've had in probably a five-year period, and it's been consistent without changing it. So by the numbers, for our patrol operations, we've had 90,000 calls for service, we had 2,600 traffic citations, we had 8,300 reports taken and 2,600 arrests made in operations. Calls for service up 6%. We had 90,000 calls for service this year over the 85,000 in 2022. Traffic citations, our traffic citations are up 12%. Again, I think you go back to having more police on the streets, but because of the technology and the innovation and our level of calls for service, they're not just going call to call to call, they're actually doing what we said we would do with some of the Measure E opportunity, and that really is enforcing the traffic in our city. We know traffic is something that is, that you hear about a lot, that I hear about a lot, and we wanted an emphasis on traffic. And to that point, we're continuing to expand our traffic unit by having more people out on the streets at different times of the day to address some of our school concerns, some of our busy intersections, especially when it gets to the afternoons when traffic gets heavy. Agency arrests were up 35%. We had 1,983 last year, we had 2,682 this year. 35% increase is as a result of us having an opportunity to go out and do proactive policing. And you'll see some of the numbers later and where that's been important for us to change our approach and not just still having calls for service, but also being to be proactive and eliminate things or preventing them from happening. Reports that were taken, 8,392, 7,400, I'm sorry, 549 from 2022 to 2023. So we had 11% increase. Again, that is a lot, has a lot to do with proactive policing. This is one of our spider comments, Elk Grove Police Officers are top-notch, I love the way they keep our city safe. That's an anonymous Elk Grove resident. It's very common to hear that when we're out communicating with our community, it's oftentimes we do get very positive feedback. Our traffic unit focuses on the quality of life related to driving throughout the City of Elk Grove. The traffic unit consists of one traffic lieutenant. The traffic unit consists of one traffic lieutenant, two traffic sergeants, two traffic detectives, seven traffic units and two traffic community service officers. It's a pretty diverse workspace and work group, but there's a method to the madness there. And that really is, we want to ensure that at every facet, whether it's a professional staff or a sworn officer, we have the best people that are working in traffic. We have the people who can respond to requests from our community, requests from our council and requests from our staff. And that takes the diversity of the entire organization to do, not just police officers. All of these are roles that are involved in large-scale operations such as DUI checkpoints, event parades and task force operations. We have a lot of community events and this unit is primarily responsible for all of the traffic safety at all of those community events. It's a pretty big undertaking, but we're very fortunate to have a robust and a growing traffic unit. Traffic operations. So we had DUI checkpoints, nine point eight percent of all traffic operations last year were DUI checkpoints. Traffic enforcement, we had forty-two point six percent. Distracted driving enforcement was fourteen percent. Bicycle, pad and motorcycle enforcement was thirty-two percent. Our DUI arrests, this is important to us. From twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and sixty-two. Twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and twelve. We had a twenty-three percent increase this year at DUI arrests. We had two hundred and sixty-one and twenty twenty-three, and I would argue that we're going to have more than that in our city this year. Distracted driving is up forty-six percent, nine hundred and four over six hundred and twenty last year. And those are just two areas that we highlighted, but I think what it shows is what we just talked about, and that's the importance of us emphasizing the traffic safety in our community. Far too often, we see too many accidents, too many pedestrian accidents where people are hit by vehicles by someone being distracted or unfortunately for us in the incident with our officer, a DUI driver. Getting the opportunity to become a motor officer for the city of Elk Grove is an absolute thrill. It was the absolute hardest thing I've ever had to accomplish in my career. Goal as a motor officer is to educate, enforce and need for good driving behavior. Being on an enforcement stop, having cars passing by screaming out, thank you or giving thumbs up shows how much we support we have in the city. And that is from Officer Diaz and he's a hundred percent right. And we can, we will be at at vehicle stops and people will say, thank you, especially when that's sometimes those loud mufflers and speeders that are going through our neighborhoods. It's significant. Special operations. So our special operations bureau consists of a K-9 team, which is extremely important for us. Our school resource officers who are top-notch at creating relationships with the kids in our community and our schools. Our special equipment officer, which does much of the electronics stuff that we're talking about. Our crisis intervention response team, formerly known as the Mobile Crisis Support Team, which are those folks who get to go and help and handle calls for service where people are in emotional and mental distress. Each officer selected for the specialty assignment receives specialized training specific to their assignment and designed to provide the most appropriate response to various incidents. To be a member of any of these specialized units, officers must go through some rigorous testing and the interview process. And once they're selected, they receive comprehensive training for this particular, for these particular programs. We're not just about a SWAT team. Even though our SWAT team is extremely important to us, you can see our special operations has connections to the community and connections to our our kids and our families in a way that is really unique and specialized. Our K-9 officers have approximately four hundred hours of specialized training and they continue to do different sorts of training up to a hundred and ninety-two hours per year, which averages about sixteen hours per month. And as you can see, they're more than just enforcement. They are also community relations and the importance of what they do and what they have as far as going to our community events is significant. These dogs are loved by much of the many of the people in our community, but also by the officers. You can see the K-9 numbers. They have multiple arrests associated with their assignments, searches and then evidence finds and K-9 demonstrations. Our school resource officers, you know, our school resource officers are pretty special to us. They play a significant role in ensuring the safety of the students, but more than that, they create connections. They ultimately are in our schools to create a safe space for them, but they also develop our relationships. They become mentors. They become, you know, confidants for many of these kids who in some cases aren't comfortable talking at home, but they have really, you know, created relationships with our officers and they will spend the time to talk to them. And we have three very special ones in our city and we're very, very fortunate that these officers love doing what they're doing and they absolutely enjoy spending the time with the kids in our schools. Our unmanned aerial system, we kind of just talked about this a little bit, so I won't talk too much on it, but this system is extremely important to us. Our drone program is something that we've had for several years now. And you can see how it growing is going to not only continue to make our city safe, but add to the the ability for us to create a environment where the quality of life continues to rise in our city. Crisis Intervention Response Team. This team is invaluable. You really can't put a price on what they do. They obviously handle significant calls for us, but the calls that they go to, in the past, we would have had to go and actually put hands on some of the people because of, you know, whatever the situation that they were in. Having a having a counselor that works for the city of Elk Grove, we have two of them now, but actually have the skill set and the abilities to go and diffuse a situation because of the words that they can speak that sometimes the fear of somebody in a uniform cannot has changed the game for this profession. It absolutely has eliminated deadly force situations because of the ability that they have as counselors in our community and in our organization to to calm the situation down. We're very fortunate to have a crisis response team, but moreover, we're very, very fortunate to have two in particular counselors that are phenomenal people who care about what they do and who they are. And then we have officers who likewise enjoy those positions. We're very fortunate. You can see the calls of service that they've gone to this year over last year, a sixty-six percent increase. That's significant. That means there's less contacts that law enforcement has with a family in crisis when a law enforcement person is not required. Let's see, go through this. So some of our, some of this as well has to do with our crisis response, meaning our negotiations team. That's an ever-evolving program here. We just held a conference at District Fifty-Six where we had almost three hundred people from across the region come to our city to get training and education on crisis negotiations. We're very proud of the fact that we have a good program, but also that we're able to host those type of programs in our city. Our investigations. So investigations bureau, they comprise of several detective units, family services, person crimes, property and financial crimes, special investigations and forensics. All these units are dedicated and especially trained for to handle problems that that have arisen. Many times patrol officers will go to a call, they'll forward the information to investigations even when there's an arrest. The investigators are really there to give our families, our community a chance to heal. They provide a service by wrapping or completely encircling themselves behind the victims and giving closure to whatever happened to the victims in our community. Our investigators are thoughtful, careful and compassionate individuals who really have to do, go above and beyond in some cases to get closure or get prosecutions in some cases. And it's not a job that is the easiest, but there is a commitment from the city and this organization to ensure that we have the quality of life crimes healed for some of those families. It is a very, very unique and difficult and one of the areas that we're continuing to staff because they are short. So their workload tends to be a little bit higher, but they still give each case the care and concern that we would all want. Our family services, and this is part of it, our family services works closely with our partners at the Child Protective Services and WEVE. Our WEVE advocates are on site. That's significant because every domestic violence situation we have in our city has an opportunity to communicate with a WEVE advocate. We can't really put into words the the value that comes with somebody that has this skill set in our organization. Sometimes the people who are victims won't talk to the law enforcement, but they will talk to an advocate. It's very important to us and it's part of who we are and what this organization is about when it comes to safety and providing the ultimate service for all of the victims in our community. We had twenty-one outreach classes to the community. These classes include domestic violence awareness, internet crimes against children, crime prevention techniques and advocate training, WEVE advocate training. And then we have information on this as well. So if you go to our website or if you go to the story book here, you'll be able to see the phone numbers while you're going through our our annual report. Our investigative division, they had five hundred and eighty-five cases assigned to investigations. They had five hundred and fifty-three closed. And that's a, that is a very good number when it comes to investigations. Seventy-eight missing person cases and seventy-four of those closed. There's never a typical workday and this is Detective Barazza who says this, every day brings something new. What makes working investigations great is being able to work a case from start to finish, holding someone accountable and getting closure or justice for the victims. And that makes those long investigations worth every minute. And she's a hundred percent right and she's one of our excellent detectives. Forensics are a significant part of our investigations as well and our forensics has a new building, a new space where they're able to utilize the newest technology and forensic techniques and tools to help solve crimes. And in this particular one, we talk about a homicide now that occurred that they were able to solve from our forensic forensic units from a twenty twenty-one homicide based on fingerprints. And the suspect was sentenced to fifty years to life. It's significant. Our new building is absolutely gorgeous. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to go through it, but the technology in there is amazing. We're able to utilize different machines and do different things to ensure that we literally have the highest technological abilities when it comes to investigate investigating crimes. It's pretty amazing. Community resources. Our community resources bureau consists of two units, our problem-oriented policing and our volunteers and police services. And in partnership with Sacramento County DA's office, the community resources bureau has now the pleasure of having a community prosecutor. Game changer for us as an organization and the people in our community when it comes to dealing with quality of life issues or problem-oriented policing issues. Our community prosecutor, Anthony Ortiz, has been amazing. He has given us another level of opportunity to ensure that we truly get closure for the victims in our community. You can see here some of the pictures of our problem-oriented policing team. The Elk Grove Police Department POP team utilizes special utilizes specializes in addressing quality of life concerns within the community. Our POP unit operates in several programs to assist with improving the quality of life and finding solutions to complex problems. Sometimes our neighbor disputes are some of our greatest concerns and complaints and our POP team has the ability to go out and address those concerns and truly, and in many cases, find a resolution for both parties to avoid, you know, continued confrontation. In addition to that, they work in the retail theft program and that allows, this program allows retail businesses and partnerships to prevent and prosecute retail theft. Again, it kind of goes back to our community prosecutor as well. You can see some of the our team and our growing team. Mejere has also helped us with our problem-oriented policing team and that is expanding and continue to expand to be a program that is going to be able to utilize the east and west side instead of one central location. Our goal is to have POP officers to reach out and be within the communities and in the neighborhoods on the east and west side of our city. We also have Explorer Program through the the POP program and we have fourteen, we have youth between the ages of fourteen and twenty who are interested in a career in law enforcement. These young women and men, they learn the fundamentals of law enforcement, the duties and the procedures. And if you want to learn more about this program, which we, I encourage you to, please look at our Explorer Program because that's the future of this profession. Many of those kids end up in law enforcement in some form or fashion and they're extremely important to what we do and how we connect with the youth in our community. Homeless outreach. So this is a picture of a before and after camp. I don't think there's any secret that, you know, when you're looking at some of the, you know, homeless concerns that we have, sometimes it is some of the things that are left behind from some of those camps or as some of the camps have grown, we've seen, you know, different things from needles and and garbage and just things that are that are unsightly that we don't need in our community. Well, part of our outreach team and working with our city partners is cleaning up those camps. We had ninety-seven camp cleanups. We had three hundred and twenty-four outreach contacts and then we had fifty-six thousand pounds of garbage removed from the camps that we had in the in the city of Elk Grove. You know, it is no small task, however, it's something that we're up to. We know it's important for our community to see a clean and vibrant place and that's what we're willing to do and that's what we're continuing to do with our city partners. And I think it shows in our response to our community. But in addition to that, we try to ensure that the folks that are unfortunately in these situations have opportunities to get out of it and that's through our navigators in the city of Elk Grove. It's not just doing enforcement. It's not just taking people to jail. It's making sure that they have an option or a place to go if needed. And then that's something that we're really proud of. The compassion in what we do is important and it remains prevalent in in our response to community. Our volunteers and police services. I love this number. I love what they do. The big number on the bottom is what blows me away every single year. We have six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two hours from our volunteers. Service center calls, they handled six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. They did vacation checks. Vacation checks, for those who may not know, our volunteers go and when we get neighborhoods who say that I'm going to, I'm going to be on vacation, can you have an officer come by my house? Our volunteers go and check fences, make sure doors are locked, make sure that the homes are safe. They did two thousand of those last year. That's a lot. Parking citations issued, three hundred and sixteen. Fraud prevention seminars. They put on seminars for the seniors and the elderly community, anybody who might need it. Our volunteers do that for us and the seniors educated at those seminars, four hundred and eighty-three. It's a big number there that they save for us in our city and our organization, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That is a pretty big number, but an important number for us. But moreover, it's the community, it's the contact that they have in our communities and they're staying connected to us and reaching out and it's an extension of our service to our community. Volunteers and police services are committed to the fraud prevention and I think those are important as well because sometimes our seniors are forgotten in our community and we want to ensure that they are not. Animal services. Big numbers for animal services. Our animal service continued success as a temporary home for thousands of animals. They made their way through and came with much hard work and dedication from the animal services staff, fostering, licensing, adoption. Surgeries were up in twenty twenty-three from twenty twenty-two. The shelter got out in the community even more with different events. They came to some of our barbecue in the beats and they partnership with the food bank. They do different things with our homeless navigators and the TNR team, that trap neuter and release team. Animal Shelter takes great pride in the ability to serve the community of Elk Grove and its pets. If you want, in addition to your family, please go to our shelter. We're always having adoptions. Some of these numbers are quite amazing. Twenty twenty-two licenses that were issued were seven thousand. In twenty twenty-three, it was ten thousand four hundred and forty-seven. Animals adopted, we had four hundred, almost four hundred more animals adopted this year from twenty twenty-two. Animals fostered, almost six hundred more. Animals vaccinated, almost three hundred more or a little more than three hundred more. And then microchips administered, ten thousand more animals this year had microchips administered than we had in twenty twenty-two. It's a big number. That means that our animal shelter is absolutely doing the best that they can do, working to their best of their abilities and ensuring the community has safe and healthy animals. We added a low-cost spay and neuter option in twenty twenty-two and they performed four hundred and eighty-six surgeries this year in twenty twenty-three. And this is, I think indicative of of our animal services. And this is from Sarah. I love working for the animal services because every day brings a meaningful opportunity to advocate for and protect the voiceless. Working here isn't just a job, it's a passion-driven journey where compassion and dedication intersect to make the tangible difference in the lives of animals and our community. I'm proud to be part of a team committed to fostering empathy, fostering empathy, promoting responsible pet ownership and protecting the well-being of animals in our city or in the city of Elk Grove. That's from Sarah. And she runs as the manager of the Elk Grove Center and it's no surprise that the compassion and care for our community, the animals is the way that it is because of, in large part because of what she does. So Animal Shelter, they did different events. They offered vaccinations, off-site adoptions, kitten shower comfort club, get to know, and we get to know the Elk Grove Center, all different programs that they're part of and that they do. They did have two percent less calls for service, but I think you can see that the calls inside the shelter were up significantly. So the work balance is definitely there. Support services. This year, we had an opportunity to upgrade our communication center, our dispatch center. And you can see here, that's what we had done. This was what the center used to look like. This is what it looks like now with additional centers, or I'm sorry, with additional decks or stations where our dispatchers can operate or take calls for service. I actually thought that they had, I was gone for a couple of months. When I came back, I went into the dispatch center and I actually thought that they added space. I thought they moved a wall. It is a completely new dispatch center. Some of the best technology that you can find in a dispatch center. Some of the best technology that you can find in a dispatch center and a place that is now well-lit, a place that people want to come and work. And you can tell that the care and concern was, has been given there, and that is in large part to our partners in the city and our electeds providing us an opportunity for grant funding and support from you as our council. So thank you, because our organization is very appreciative of this opportunity. So total calls in 2023, 169,049. 96% of those calls were answered in 15 seconds or less. Calls were actually down 5%, 177,000 in 2022, 169,000 this last year. Our dispatch bureau, the calls actually, as they were dispatched, we had 37,000. There were other, meaning there were just either enviewed calls or different types of calls for service. We actually had emergency or 911 calls with 57,257, and then non-emergency was 74,689. It's a very busy service or dispatch center. This is just a comment again from our spider. The officers were very professional and patient. They responded quickly, and the dispatcher stayed with me until I was comfortable hanging up. Thank you so much. And I think that, again, speaks to what we're trying to foster inside this organization with care and concern for all of our community. So crime statistics for our city. So in 2023, the Elk Grove Police Department responded, reported crime statistics to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, NIBRAS. This is the second consecutive year NIBRAS is the FBI crime reporting system that collects and reports crime data, and it's designed to provide a common language of crime classifications across the nation. NIBRAS compiles a variety of crime classifications along with different elements associated with the crime, such as victimology, relationships, arrestee data, and property involved. NIBRAS has three categories for crime reporting, which are crime against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. And those are important to be aware of. Elk Grove saw an increase in crimes against society, which includes offenses such as drug violations, weapons, law violations, disorderly conduct. Further, certain criminal offenses such as trespassing and driving under influence are only reported under the crimes against society category when there is an arrest. The expansion of officers on patrol, in addition to the increase in proactive enforcement efforts such as vehicle stops are contributing factors that correspond to the increase in crimes against society. And we'll get into that. And that is where we had the additional officers in our, in our organization, and you saw the vehicle stops or the number of vehicle stops. And you'll see another number in here that is astounding, the difference of stops between last year and this year. So person crimes, 733, 867 for crimes against society, and property crimes, 300, I'm sorry, 3,522. And you can see, person crimes, homicide, robbery, and assault, crimes against society, drug violations, weapons, law violations, disorderly conduct, and property crime, which is burglary, vehicle theft, and larceny. So crime reporting in general, down in 2023 when it comes to property crimes, up against crimes against society, and in one proceeds against crimes against, person crimes from 2022. Crimes against society and violation overview, DUI, drugs, narcotics, drug equipment, weapons, disorderly conduct, and trespassing. These are all specifically related to, the majority of these are related to vehicle stops that are done in proactive policing, and those numbers are up. Violent crime and property crime, there's a decrease in both of those. So homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, arson, burglary, larceny theft, and motor vehicle theft are down in our city. Our vehicle stops, and this is kind of where we are policing the quality of life. We are preventing the crimes in our city, and I'm proud of this number. We have an 83% increase in vehicle stops in our city. Essentially, we have prevented a lot of crimes from happening, but in addition to that, the numbers that you saw are the arrests that are associated with these vehicle stops. So the crimes against society, the drug violations, the weapons violations, drug equipment, DUIs, weapons, disorderly, all of those have been tied to proactive policing and vehicle stops. A lot of those have, I should say. And so that is where this number has made an increase, but you see the increase in one year to the next, and then that corresponds with this, where we were up. And then where we went up here and some of our crimes against society and property crimes. That's a big number for us. That number, that increase of 83% is a big number, but it goes to show, I think we've had additional officers, we not think, I know we have additional officers on our streets. Our patrol numbers are up, our enforcement numbers are up, our traffic DUI numbers are up. We're able to go out and do enforcement. We're able to provide a service in our community that we did not have in the past, and Misery is in large part responsible for some of that. This is the annual report at a glance. I am here for any questions that you may or may not have. But as you can see, we're really proud of the work that we've done this year. We continue to do, and our efforts will continue through technology, compassion, and delivering a service that we expect in our community. Thank you.
Let's see. Procedurally, let me open up public comment. Nobody has signed up. I'll close public comment. Start with council member soon.
Okay. Well, thank you, chief, for this presentation. You just summed up my comments from the drone, the drone discussion of why, you know, that they trust and that you and your team have earned through our community. And so I, again, I've said this many times, and, you know, I, I'll say it again because you guys keep performing this way. I'm incredibly proud to be part of this leadership team and, you know, know all of you and the men and women in this department. You guys really set the standard for the region, probably the state, I don't know, but I would, I would think, you know, you guys do a great job out there. I wholeheartedly praise and commend you for your connections to the community that enables that trust to continue. Keep up the great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No, I'm very appreciative, very appreciative and very, I'm very grateful for the work that, that our police department does and under your leadership and under Chief Solomon's leadership. And you see the professionalism grow. You see the trust from the community for Elk Grove Police Department. And that's, that's a very reassuring, very good feeling to have because it shows that when you lead with compassion, heart, and focus, a lot of things can happen. And when we're using all forms of technology at our fingertips to help keep the community safe, help to keep us safe, and keep us all vigilant at the same time, and really, this is why people, one of the reasons why people move to Elk Grove, why they want to make Elk Grove their home. And it's every, it's everything that, that has been thought of, envisioned, and being put into action. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Spees.
Fantastic report, chief. That, it's, you and I have had the opportunity a couple of times before to participate in sort of interest, inter-city discussions, right? And what's always kind of nice is that, or we got to be careful that sometimes that we, we don't get to a point of bragging, right? Because, you know, because sometimes, you know, you get folks who would say, you know, police force needs to have mental health counselors on team. If you're not doing mental health, you're, you're wrong. I agree. We got that, right? And so it's, it's really nice to be able to do that. And it's just, you know, go around the valley, talk with other councilpersons in other cities. And man, I tell you, some of the difficulties that they're going through, it's, it's amazing. So, I mean, I could, I could go through the whole list. I could, I could keep everybody here for another 45 minutes. But one thing that is interesting, and I want to, two, two things I want to pick out on here, and one of them is a little bit, you probably wonder why I'm picking up on this one, but 200 hours of training.
Yeah.
Think about 200 hours of training. Think about your regular day job. Do you do 200 hours of training every year? 200 hours of training is five weeks of training. That's 10% of your work life.
Yeah.
Right? And then, I mean, you know, tack on, they got vacation and weekends, right? So, you know, it's, that five weeks of training is significant. We have a very professional workforce. And again, I would, I would put it up against most other, I'm sure fire department could probably say, ah, we do 220, but, you know.
Sure.
But, we do 220. You know, and I'm sure I'll, I'll hear, I'll hear it from them for teasing them, but, but my point in it is, is, is show me another career field where that, where folks are focused that much on training. And so that's very, very important. And so what's, what's interesting is I was looking at it this afternoon. It's, it's very, very easy to say, oh, crimes up. Oh, my gosh, right? Ah, these numbers, it's horrible. Elk Grove is unsafe, right? And, and what's important, though, is that you take the lesson that that is additional enforcement. These are more DUIs that are off the streets now, right? These are hazard, or this could be someone who comes in with a stolen vehicle, but also, guess what? Has some narcotics and has some weapons in the vehicles, right? So it isn't that the crime is up, it is that engagement is happening, and those are being removed from the, from the streets, and we are in turn safer. So with that, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, go on too long because I can. I can do it all night. But thank you very much for the professionalism. Elk Grove is safer not by accident. Elk Grove is safer because of the work that has been done by our police chiefs, by our, by our police team, but as well as past councils, right? We got to recommend, we got to recognize them for having their eyes in the right place. We couldn't be here by accident because you can go not too far away and things can be different. Right? So thank you to city managers and city managers passed, because, like I said, it's, it's not something that, this is, this is something you have to work on and build. So thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Robles.
I don't even know if there's anything else I can say. Thanks, Councilmember Spees. But no, in all seriousness, thank you, chief, for this update, and thank you for just always pouring out to our community. Your leadership is reflective of all the officers who are under you. I believe that leadership starts from the top down, and the way that you're leading it's a reflection too. And the officers just show the way of humility, the way of professionalism, the way of holding themselves to a high standard. So thank you for that. We appreciate what you're doing. We appreciate what every officer does, and because of that, Elk Grove is safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, excellent comments from my colleagues. This is what happens. It's, it isn't by accident. This is what happens when you create a partnership, when you fully fund, when you fully fund and support and provide the resources. Those resources are critical. Resources like training, technology, mental health. It is, and that's a big deal. And I'm proud of all of us recognizing that, that this isn't politics. This is about doing right by our city, doing right by our residents who deserve it, and recognize the importance of providing you with the resources to be successful. You know, when I was on the school boards, the school resource officers, when we made the switch and got more, and got Elk Grove PD involved, not just the sheriff's department, it was a game changer. I can tell you that those relationships were critical. And I saw the pride that the SROs had with the kids and continue to have. But when I was there, I saw firsthand the difference even with Elk Grove PD. And creating those relationships, so much so that on graduation, a number of students would recognize as sort of their mentor that they were allowed to bring one person, our, sort of our star students, picked one person. And every year, there was at least some, there was an SRO from, from Elk Grove. And that's quite remarkable, the impact that, that they were having with our students. So I am proud of the direction that we're heading, the diversity in hire. That is wonderful. And then just our new community prosecutor, all of these great things that are taking place. So, you know, this is a good time to pause and just reflect on not only the great accomplishments, but under your leadership and our past police chiefs, that we have been building and getting better every year. And I want to thank all of my colleagues, past and present, for recognizing the importance that public safety plays in our city. So thank you for that exceptional report. And I appreciate councilmember Spees for you recognizing the difference between these increased numbers is not increased crime, but the enforcement aspect. I think you did a great job reinforcing that message as well. That is, that is very important. So thank you. Excellent report. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you so much.
All right. So this is just receiving and information, so thank you for that, and we will go on to our next item, 9.3.
And that's to receive information, provide direction to staff regarding converting six contract positions to city positions in the Development Engineering Division of the
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Rosa Tapia, your management analyst for the Development Services Department. As your clerk mentioned, the item before you this evening is to discuss the conversion of six contract positions to city positions in the Development Engineering Division of the Development Services Department. To provide some background, since incorporation, the city has operated under a contract model where the city has relied on consultants and contractors to provide many essential services. The contract model has been particularly prominent in the Public Works and Development Services Department. In July of 2008, the council approved an implementation plan that is based on the recommendations outlined in the development assessment, system assessment report prepared by Sinclair and Associates, also known as the Sinclair Report. The implementation plan set levels of priorities. Level one included the hiring of department directors, starting with the public works director, or, excuse me, starting with the public works department as well as the planning department, which is now the Development Services Department. That transition occurred in 2009. Level two involved transitioning from contract staff to in-house core level staff in various divisions within Development Services and Public Works. Some of the conversions that have evolved since the hiring of the department directors are, in March of 2017, the council approved the conversion of five core level positions in the planning division, generating an annual savings of approximately 77,000. Subsequently, in February 2019, the council approved converting 12 contract positions to city positions in the Public Works Operations and Maintenance Division, resulting in a savings of over 1 million annually. And most recently, in 2023, the council approved the conversion of 13 contract positions to city positions in the Public Works Department, also generating an annual savings of over a million dollars. As you can see, the conversions of the above positions have proven to be successful and provide cost savings. The Development Services Department is looking to build on the success achieved by transitioning the currently outsourced Development Engineering Division to city staff. So as we all know, the Development Engineering Division's key responsibilities are to facilitate new private development projects aligned with city goals, policies and standards as identified in the city's general plan, the Elk Grove Municipal Code, rural standards, improvement standards, and construction specifications. Based on the organizational analysis performed by staff and the success of previous conversions in the planning division and the public works department, combined with the city's continued growth and high levels of service with project facilitation and processing, staff determined the recruiting and the hiring of six full-time equivalents, along with the conversion of contract staff to city staff, is in the city's best interest. The organizational charts before you illustrate the existing configuration and the proposed one. From the blue boxes in the organizational chart, recommends six full-time equivalents as a core staffing model, starting with the engineering manager, one senior civil engineer, two associate assistant engineers, one senior construction supervisor, and one administrative assistant. Under this proposed staffing model, staff is recommending the continued use of contract staff to augment staff as needed for various development engineering services. So next, I want to talk about contractor fiscal year expenses. The table before you provides a summary of expenses incurred by the city over the past five fiscal years for contractual engineering services, which, as you can see, totals over 12.7 million in contract staff expenditures. This total represents an average annual This total represents an average annual expenditure of over 2.4 million per fiscal year. As a quick note to this chart, the fluctuation noted in the annual expenses column is attributed to the volume of applications submitted and services providing, provided during those So, what does that proposed core staff cost? The table before you provides a cost analysis for the proposed six full-time equivalents in the Development Engineering Division. It also includes an estimated 50% contingency for those on-call services noticed or noted in the organizational chart. This is based on the current market needs of the division in effort to provide high-quality service. As the market fluctuates, the proposed core staff level would continue to provide the primary high-quality service with less or more reliance on augmented services depending on those market conditions. This table also includes expenditures provided by the Finance Department for cost allocation, internal services fund, and debt services for the proposed six full-time equivalents, which brings a total forecasted fiscal year expense for the proposed core staff model at just over 2 million. Do note, this analysis does not include the need to purchase one vehicle for the senior construction supervisor, that's a one-time initial cost estimated at 65,000. So, what do those fiscal year savings look like when we do the, the conversion? This table provides a parallel comparison of the estimated fiscal year savings resulting from the recommended action. The estimated savings of the proposed staff conversion is anticipated to be approximately 430,000 annually. So, tonight, staff's recommendation is that the council consider the proposed action for the following reasons. This proposed structure aims to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness and improve control of the operations in addition to allowing the city to hire skilled and knowledgeable staff while fostering an evolution towards more optimal, optimal performance. These six full-time equivalents are necessary to provide the core level of services in the Engineering Division. They represent the minimum number of personnel necessary to perform day-to-day tasks through various economic fluctuations. So, it also provides for more efficient staffing and reporting structure, as you can see from the organizational chart before you. It also allows for a larger candidate pool. We want to hire the best, the most qualified, and on board and with our city. And as noted in the financial analysis, city positions do cost less than consultant positions, resulting in ongoing savings for the city. And lastly, this hierarchy of the proposed classifications is intended to create an environment of growth and opportunity for advancement within the division, which will establish stability, retain institutional knowledge, as the city continues to evolve. And with that, myself and the Development Services Director is, are available for questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up public comment. Nobody has signed up. I'll close public comment, and I will go to my right this time for questions, comments. Councilmember Robles?
Thank you, Ms. Tapia, for that presentation. I have no questions. When ready, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Ms. Tapia. I appreciate the, I got to get around the screen there. I, I certainly appreciate it. I like the direction. I don't, this is, there's no motion on this one, right? There's no motion, just direction? Okay, so I, I think it's right. Let's move in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Great overview, Ms. Tapia. I think this is a, what you've presented to us is more than adequate, more than appropriate, and I think it's, it's, it's at the right time that we make the transition in having an in-house team, so thank you for this. This is really helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Soon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Tapia, also, for the presentation. Just a quick question for implementation purposes. Will you seek to fill this whole thing right away, or will you phase in, you know, the engineering manager now, and then the senior engineer later, or is, what's the intent?
So, that's a great question, Councilmember Soon. Our goal is to do this in series from a standpoint of current positions, like the assistant director position. Of course, my position will be vacated with my retirement coming up in July. That has to occur, and then we'd want that assistant director, as well as the director, to be part of the engineering manager position with the holidays. You're talking probably no earlier than hiring in March of next year, and then the other positions would fall in parallel. So, the goal would be to have them hired by the end of this fiscal, upcoming fiscal year, the end of June. It could bleed into the next fiscal year, but that's the goal.
Okay, okay, and, and then obviously, there's, you have the work, right? I mean, because these are funded with development fees, these are, you've got plenty of work right now that would warrant all these to be filled today?
That is correct.
Yeah, great.
And, and the contract, Will Dan's contract, the three-year contract ends in October, but we plan to extend that one year to provide that service, and right now, it's business as usual in the Development Services until we fill those positions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, too, am supportive. I think this is a great opportunity, not only for the cost savings, but building a professional department, and what that does with having consultants versus staff, there's more accountability, all things around, so I think this is a great move. Out of just curiosity, why is this just like a nod versus an actual motion? I'm curious.
We're planning on putting this in the upcoming budget, but instead of just noting it all in the budget, we want to give you kind of a preview, make sure you're good with it, and then we'll load it all into the budget when you see it in May.
Okay, perfect. So, I know Councilmember Robles is very excited to make that motion, so thank you.
Super excited, but...
You can make the motion at the appropriate time, in a couple of minutes.
All right. You can tell we're getting exhausted here. All right, thank you, everyone. So, next up are our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. Councilmember Soon?
Excuse me, nothing to report. Thank you. Well, we had our, I'm sorry, we had our meeting, but nothing, our SAC sewer meeting, nothing to report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, anything?
Sacramento Public Library JPA meeting, Joint Powers Authority, meets tomorrow at 3:00 PM at the County Chambers at 708 Street.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
STA was canceled this month, and we got, got some exciting times ahead for the Cable Television Commission. We'll be looking for a new executive director, and so more information on that as it comes up.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
Sacramento Air Quality Board meeting tomorrow, if anybody wants to show up at 9:00 AM. But also, we'll be there at 8:30, welcoming Congresswoman Matsui.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything to report, so see everybody at the State of the City. We have some great things to share with the community. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:11 PM. Thank you. Good night.